Good evening. I call this May 14, 2024, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On May 17, the video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.morrisvillnc.gov/government. Officer Ken Kurtz is our Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. Councilmember Steve Rao will now deliver the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll bow our heads in prayer. Imagine for a moment as we close our eyes that like the Marvel's movies, there is another universe, a multiverse, where there were no Asian-Americans in Morrisville carrier epics. We would have no Samosas, no Holy, no Diwali, no Momas, no Dragon Festival, no Chinese Lantern Festival, no Satish Garamella, or Yalu, or Maria Savanya, or Senator Jay Choudhury. But the fact is, in this universe, in this present day, we have Asian-Americans who are contributing immensely to the science, culture, and innovation of our nation, our region, and our state. These are the pioneers, our own Alexander Hamiltons, who come from faraway places, live up to their God-given potential, and live out their dreams, reminding us that we can be united in our diversity. We are so grateful every day to see this miracle of our nation in Morrisville, in our all-America city. As we celebrate Asian-American Heritage Month, let us also remember that in two weeks, we will be honoring our soldiers on Memorial Day. These heroes gave their lives so that our nation could endure forever, and that our progress as Americans would not be limited to our gender, our color, our skin, our sexual orientation, ethnic background. We simply are Americans bound together to pass this freedom on to the next generation. And finally, we remember during National Police Week, our police. We remember the families of Ned Bird and the 23 others that were honored on Monday in Wake County, who gave their lives and paid the ultimate sacrifice so we can be safe and free. We pray for all of these things and are so grateful this evening that our council and staff and engaged citizens can continue to have the wisdom to lead us forward, to never remind, never forget why we are all here. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
I make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Rao, second by Mayor Protam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. There are three items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution and Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment approving Morrisville Carpenter Road NC DOT Agreement Extension, a Campo Memorandum of Understanding, and a resolution approving Morrisville Environment and Stormwater Committee Chair and Vice-Chair Appointments. Would anyone like to remove any of those for discussion before we adopt? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, and the second was from, is that Councilmember Fender? Or, oh, it's Councilmember Johnson, I apologize. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well. Tonight, we have three proclamations recognizing the work of the town's dedicated employees, as well as the acknowledgment of a proclamation to recognize national cities, towns, and villages. Following the ceremonial events, we will have an update on the Morrisville Parkway Access Management Study and the presentation of the FY 2025 Recommended Budget. I will go ahead and be reading the Building Safety Month. This is a proclamation recognizing May as Building Safety Month. Whereas the town of Morrisville is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider their commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim May as Building Safety Month. We extend our appreciation to all code officials and permit technician staff serving the community through our core values of dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. So at this time, I would like to ask Shandy Paget, Inspector's Director, Inspection's Director, come forward and receive this proclamation, and then she'll probably bring up some of her team as well, or I'll do that at once. Come on up. Get a quick picture of just me and you guys, and then we'll have the whole council come up. Would you like to share a few words and introduce your team?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, Council, senior management. Really appreciate the opportunity to come up here and give just a little quick blurb about our staff. With us tonight, I have Bob Rush, one of our building inspectors in Mary Hall. We are a team of full-time nine-staff. The others were not able to make it tonight, but these folks work tirelessly, day in and day out. They average about 10,000 inspections annually with this group, 1,000 permits. They work so hard, and the customer service level they provide is top-notch, and I do appreciate everything they do. And I would be remiss if I did not include our other development services partners, planning, engineering, and fire. It's a collaborative effort between us all, and I appreciate the support you provide for us, too. Thank you.
Excellent. If the rest of the council could come up, we'd love to get a picture with us right behind you. We're going to be doing a couple of pictures, like seeing the next group waiting in the wings, too. If you guys want to get right down there, we'll have your back. A little tighter. Thank you, Shandy. Let's give them a hand. This next proclamation is for National Public Works Week. Recognizing May 19 through 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week, advancing quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the residents in Morrisville. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, parks, fleet, public buildings, and other structures, and facilities essential for our residents. Whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in Morrisville to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, the Town Council does hereby recognize the week of May 19 through 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week, and calls upon all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. That's a lot. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jeffrey Brown, Public Works Director, to come on up. Doesn't look like a video.
We can roll that video.
Stephen, you want to come on in? The whole group?
Yeah, yeah, wait, just a second.
Okay, just a second. It's your show. Tell me how you want this to work.
First of all, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council, for your support. Thank you, management, for supporting us. We also know that there's a bunch of presentations coming later tonight, and we appreciate your support for next fiscal year as well. But I just say, it's an honor to be the Public Works Director of the town of Morrisville. We've got a tremendous staff. We work collaboratively with other departments that, as I already mentioned tonight, as well as every town department. You know, we serve our internal customers and our external customers each and every single day. As our video highlighted last council meeting, we are the best to hold the town together. We're proud to do so. But we also brought y'all to the conference tonight. Now, we want to give you a big shout for you, remember. This is a poster for National Public Works Week, and next week, you can take these around with you. That's your business card. So, seriously, we wanted to give you something as a memento for National Public Works Week, and if you find an opportunity next week, dear Public Works Week, to speak to a group of individuals, a school group or whatever, and you want to highlight Public Works, we would certainly appreciate that. So, thank you for your support and all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Great.
So we want to get a picture of everybody holding their poster, so we can promote Public Works Week on social media. We'll...
If that's what you want.
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder if the other departments are seeing the swag coming this way in advance of budget.
Thank you.
Very brilliant. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got one more proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week in the town of Morrisville. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States, through Public Law 87-726, signed by President John F. Kennedy in 1962, proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, Public Law 103-322, signed by President William Clinton in 1994, directs that the flag of the United States and on all government buildings be displayed at half-staff on May 15 of each year. And whereas, it is important that all people know and understand the duties, responsibilities... responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the members of the Morrisville Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Town of Morrisville and unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Police Week and urges residents to observe in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all people. Be it further proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen officers. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Acosta to come forward to receive this proclamation.
So I did not come bearing gifts, but I made a mental note. So thank you for that leadership tip, Jeffrey.
Okay, because who steers the ship?
Right, that's right.
Exactly right. So do you want to get the council up here at the same time?
Sure.
If the council would like to come up as well. David, nice to see you again. Let's get a handshake real quick. If your team would get down a little bit, otherwise we're going to run out of space pretty fast. Hey. Sounds like he's coming for your job or something.
I know. I've made a mental note. Give me.
Like a softball trophy or something? Oh, he didn't hear that, so that's okay.
Come on up here.
Sir Kurtz, if you want to hold this up front so people can actually see it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Saved you a spot.
Yep. Excellent. Didn't even use the camera this time. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So first, thank you Mayor and Council for just this opportunity to honor the police department and all these officers. I may not have brought any gifts, but I did bring an amazing staff that works very hard each and every day to keep our town safe. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Sergeant Godwin, who passed away in May 22nd of 1997, and he'll never be forgotten.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate you.
Thank you all very much. Okay. At this time, we would like to acknowledge that May is recognized as National Cities, Towns and Villages Month. 2024 marks the National League of Cities 100th anniversary and a copy of that proclamation will be mailed to the National League of Cities. Tonight, we would now like to invite Ms. Danielle Kidrich, Senior Planner, to come forward to give us an update on the Morrisville Parkway Access Management Study. Ms. Kidrich.
So I was last here on, in mid-March and provided some information about the Morrisville Parkway Access Management Study, the recommendations that were out for public comment during our Phase Two public engagement. And what I'm going to do tonight is review some of those recommendations as well as some of the changes that we've made based on Town Council feedback, public feedback. And there are a few slides in here that does contain some background information. I'm not going to repeat exactly everything from last time, so I may skip through a few of those to get to the highlights. But did want to focus on, again, this is looking at the corridor of Morrisville Parkway from Davis Drive to NC 54. So in terms of some of the two, I guess two of the larger items we heard from Town Council on the March 12th meeting was the number of channelized islands that were proposed in the recommendation and the additional U-turns that that created. There was also some concern about the Wake County Public School buses, bus stops and some of the routing, so I'll touch on that as well. And then just to highlight in the Phase Two public comments, that period was from March 7th to April 7th and we received 53 comments from 35 individuals. A copy of those comments were included in an attachment, but they're also at receipts as well if you needed to take a closer look at those. And then we did meet in April 22nd. There's a multi-jurisdictional technical steering committee that did consider this information as well with some of the updates to the recommendations. So there were the five focus areas along this corridor and we also had a corridor wide recommendation. There was no changes to the corridor wide recommendation that included looking at some wider sidewalks or side paths as well as some striping to visually narrow the roadway, but no changes to the actual curbing that is out there today. So the first area to focus on is Morrisville Parkway at Davis Drive. I'm going to go ahead and scroll down to the picture because that'll help as I'm going through some of this information. So we did not have any specific changes that were made in this area, but one of the things you'll see throughout some of the recommendations is looking at midterm and long-term improvements and trying to divide that up a little bit. That will either based on need or based on, we'll also touch lightly on cost as well too. But these are some options to help us consider. After the study recommendations are eventually adopted, we will need to consider in figuring out the strategy for implementation. So this is one way to help us think about that as well. So all of these recommendations do have some midterm and long-term improvements, so things to do sooner rather than later. From the public feedback side, we did hear agreeing for, you know, additional capacity. That's those dual turn lanes. The westbound right turn lane off of Morrisville Parkway onto Davis Drive. A lot of people liked that. There's also some feedback in terms of at the signal, there's the blinking, what we call the blinking yellow light. A lot of people want to get rid of that for safety concerns. There is interest in protected bike lanes and that's a conversation we had before. There's only so much right of way, so we do have to figure out what can we fit within here. So we do have some wider sidewalks that we're looking at, but not protected bike lanes. And I'll go ahead and just kind of go through all of these and then we can, I'll take any kind of comments or questions afterwards as well. So the next area was Morrisville Parkway at Morrisville Elementary School. And for this, I'll go ahead and scroll down to the area with the improvements on here. In terms of public feedback that we received, there was people that were in favor of the signalized intersection here in front of the main entrance to Morrisville Elementary School along with the added turn lane. We did hear some disagreement with the channelized island that we were originally proposing. And then there was, you know, concerns about speed and the queuing for the school itself. So in terms of changes to this particular, we're calling Area Two along the corridor, we did remove the channelized island here at the main entrance to Morrisville Elementary School. So this has your more traditional signalized intersection. There's also some consideration for pedestrian refuge island along the northern crosswalk in that area. Just in case there is a need to be able to have some refuge getting across in that location. So thinking a little bit more about safety there. The other area to focus on was the entrance to Morrisville Community Park, which also has a driveway to Morrisville Elementary School. And we were looking at what were the rectangular rapid flashing beacons or also this pedestrian hybrid beacon. The pedestrian hybrid beacon we also know as a hawk. That one is being recommended for that location and not the rapid flashing beacon. And then the other thing I did want to mention, although this kind of covers the entire corridor, but as we talk about the school, I did have a conversation with the folks at Wake County Public School System that does the bus routing along this corridor and reviewed the recommendations with them. So there are bus stops that happen along the corridor, but in terms of any impact to their service or future service, they didn't have any concerns. But I did provide them with this information in case there is anything that comes up along the way. But the way that, you know, the buses do stop on Morrisville Parkway, for example, to access, how the students come from the apartment complexes and sometimes they may turn into different neighborhoods. But overall, there was no concerns from the school district with regard to that. So I did want to mention that conversation. The third area is the Morrisville Parkway at Morrisville Aquatic and Fitness Center. So in this area, we had kind of a mix of reactions to the intersection at Creek Park Drive and Blackridge Street with that intersection with Morrisville Parkway. So there was some disagreement on signalization, the channelization and the crosswalks. People who agreed with the signalization, people who agreed with the installation of the crosswalks. And then there was just some, in this particular area with the curves, concerns about visibility of crosswalks and pedestrians and speeding around the curves. So the, kind of based on juggling a bunch of different feedback on here, we have, this is where we had previously recommended a channelized island with a signal. This is being changed to a full signal with crosswalks on each of the road segments for that intersection. And then we'd have to take a closer look to whether or not pedestrian refuge islands could work here. There may need to be some, you know, with the U-turn movements, whether or not they actually will work. But this would be instead of a channelized island, a full signal and the adding crosswalks that don't currently exist. As well as there are some indications of additional turn lanes to be able to facilitate some movements as well as near Duck Pond Circle. Continuing to still recommend that turn lane that allows for the U-turn to Morrisville Aquatic and Fitness Center. The other area to point out is here at Duck Pond Circle. This one is noted as a longer term improvement. There is still a channelized island and potentially signal at this location. It is something that would be in the future to be reevaluated at that time as well. Just due to some of the curvature of the road here and the access and the visibility, this may be a safer alternative, but it is something that would be in the longer term. So I did want to note that that one was still, in terms of channelized islands, that is still one location where there was a recommendation for it. The fourth location is Morrisville Parkway at Park West Village. So in this area, we did receive some feedback in terms of, you know, the Trader Joe's location, being able, kind of the crosswalk on the street there and kind of the turning movements and the ability to cross there came up as a concern to some people. There was some disagreement with some of the different channelized islands proposed in the various locations. And in terms of changes to this, the, there are still the same recommendations. They are coded in terms of midterm and longer term improvements. Due to the location, I'm going to call this, there's more on the left-hand side. I've got the left-hand channelization island and then the right-hand one. The right-hand one is close to the intersection of NC 54 and there is a variety of turning movements allowed at this location that has a lot of potential for conflict points. And so this one is recommended to help with some of that in terms of the turn lanes and being able to make the turning movements for this channelization island. The one here on the, what we're calling the left-hand side, channelization island, it is still in here as a longer term improvement, something to be considered in the future. We did have some concerns in terms of maybe it's not needed right now. There's the development going on just to the south with some apartment buildings and we don't necessarily know all of the impact or the traffic movements right now. So these are in here. This one could be reconsidered in the future as a longer term improvement. So those are the recommendations in this area, number four. And then the fifth area is Morrisville Parkway at NC 54. For this location, we did hear a lot of concerns about being able to cross the streets, whether it is, you know, not allowing for right turn on red, whether it's cars are not yielding to pedestrians that have the signal to be able to go across and then they're trying to access, whether it's the commercial areas, the bus stops along there. There's also concerns, yeah, mostly about the pedestrians in this area and then just sort of the impact of the cars. Although we did have, you know, recommendation for no rights on reds. Over time, the drivers no longer pay attention to those. They kind of, so we're thinking about two options to, you know, there might be some alternating sign that allows for rights at certain times and not in others. So it's a little bit of additional consideration for the pedestrians here to make it easier for them. But that tended to be more of the highlights for this area. So there were no actual changes to the recommendations, just the mid and long-term improvement kind of separation there. And then one thing that we did not have at the last meeting is there's, you know, what does all of this cost? And so there are some preliminary cost estimates that are associated with these particular improvements. Everything for construction cost is nearly $11 million. So that is a high price tag for the improvements, but there is options to do things in terms of what are the highest priorities? What are things we can work on over time? I have noted here in terms of project funding, the capital improvement program did, does have money for intersection improvements. There was some money set aside for Morrisville Parkway with a previous study. So there might be the opportunity for around, there's around $2 million to leverage some of that with a matching grant to be able to extend that further to continue some, to be able to do some of these different improvements. So this will be some of the considerations that do need to happen at a future date, but did want to make sure that you all were aware of these as well. And I will also go on to the, the next slide because I think it's important to look at what are the next steps as well? Because this is, this is just informational update here. You will be getting a final study that comes back to you, an actual document that has some background information and other types of things. This particular study is funded by Campo with a small match from the town. So this does go through the Campo process as well in terms of going to the technical coordinating committee. So they were briefed on this particular study. Today, we have an update, you know, on the public comment and the revised recommendations. The Campo Executive Board will see this tomorrow. And then we will be preparing the final study documents over the next month or so and then coming back with a final study at the end of June for Town Council. And then Campo goes through a process, the Campo Executive Board, to also adopt the study since it's going through their process as well. So what I would, you know, ask as well is if there's any questions, concerns about these changes to the recommendations that I have highlighted today.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So give us a little bit of idea of what midterm means. People have been looking for this one for a long time, the westbound turn.
And maybe the wording can be different in terms of next, more of a next step. I think. I think midterm in terms of what would we take from the study and work on next? So what would we kind of, it must immediately be moving into, what do we want to design? So in that sense, midterm is not necessarily maybe the best term here. It will take time to design and get to construction, but what we'd be looking at is everything in, the green is the focus to what we would try to do as the first step.
Okay. And will you at a future time be asking which of these five areas you want us to concentrate on first, first step?
Yeah, and so what we can do as well is, once we do know that there is, the study is approved, we will have to kind of brainstorm and figure out what is the best way to use some of the money that has already been set aside, what other types of grant programs do we want to go after to leverage that and see how far it can go. So there may need to be an additional input. If we say we can only do two things, what is the highest priority as well? So I think that'll be a point of consideration either when I come back next time or at a future date when we are figuring out some of that as well.
Okay. Yep. Look forward to providing that kind of input. For Area Two, that's over at the school, the picture shows a single hawk. Is it going to be in both directions? It'll be a hawk on each side of the road?
It would be in both directions, yes.
Okay. For the Park West Trader Joe's, the new apartments had TIA's. Do they indicate any improvements that they would be contributing to?
Yeah, so actually, the ones that are in this kind of peach color outlined as completed improvements, the two turn lanes were put in as a part of that particular mixed, what they called a mixed-use project there, the new apartment buildings. So that was required as a part of their TIA.
Okay, so these channelized medians are not part of that. They've already done their thing, so the rest is on us?
Yes.
And the recommendations for Morrisville Parkway at 54, those also taking into account the 54 and More study? Because those are mostly just pedestrian improvements?
They are. This one does have also that added dual turn lane onto Morrisville Parkway as well. The 54 More study has a variety of, I know there was also what they call these reduced conflict intersections with kind of these U-turns incorporated into different portions. So I don't know that the town was in favor of all of the recommendations in that particular study. This one looked at capacity as well as the safety of the intersection.
Because I just remembered, this was like one of the most used turn movements and then onto Weston Parkway. So there aren't big improvements in the future happening here, like an additional left turn lane or anything?
This study, there is nothing that is planned through NC DOT at this intersection or on the near horizon. So this one for capacity is recommending this second, as you're going kind of northbound and then turning onto Morrisville Parkway, there's a recommendation for a second turn lane here, and what they call the dual turn lane to add capacity. But that would be the extent of any type of roadway capacity here.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. I think I saw Councilmember Johnson first and then we'll go with Councilmember Robati.
So thank you, Danielle, for the update and for the changes. I appreciate that. I'm happy to see so many folks commented and we got a lot of really good input. And just for those that haven't been on Morrisville Parkway today, we had another accident on Morrisville Parkway and another light has been taken out. And I will tell you, I'm really grateful that those lights, I don't know what they're made of. I don't know if it's fiberglass, but luckily they buckle easily because I, I witnessed, I went by twice, so, because I had to do a U-turn to go the other way. And I think everybody was right. I did not see an ambulance, but I don't know that for sure. But I'm grateful. It didn't look like a terrible, terrible accident, but, so clearly their work needs to be done along this roadway because so many people travel it. But the two, two things I just wanted to highlight, the Davis Drive, second left onto Morrisville Parkway, it was a comment from somebody about the fact that that could be a problem when the school is, the carpool lane is there. So how do, how do we address that or is that something we'll look at when the time comes?
Yeah, and I hope, we've had some, as we've been working on the studies, some conversations with Morrisville Elementary School. Our interest is to have them rework or rethink or do a study for their particular site of how to get more cars onto the elementary for the, for the pickup. That will help reduce some of the vehicles that are on Morrisville Parkway and then also make some of these improvements that we're proposing more efficient as well. So it's going to be a little bit of a combination of both to make sure that it, that it works because I think part of the goal is, I mean, we can do all of our improvements, but if cars are still backing up to Davis Drive, it, they won't be as helpful in some circumstances. So that'll be a continuing conversation because, yeah, that comment, I think, you know, does have some value in it as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then the other, there was a comment about the blinking yellow light and you even mentioned it. So how do we, how do we address that? Because I, I've been saying that for a long time. I think that has, is, and I don't know this for a fact, it's just, you know, my, my gut, that that does contribute to a lot of accidents we see at various intersections, not just the Davis Drive and Morrisville Carpenter.
Yeah, and we can also take a look at just the blinking light sooner rather than later as well, too, in terms of some modifications to that. This intersection is managed by the Town of Cary in terms of the signal itself, so some opportunities to have some of those conversations ahead of time as well.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. And just, I should have said this earlier, when police, and we still have somebody here from fire, but police and fire, the accident, I, I left for a couple of hours and I came back and they were still there. So police and fire were out there for several hours today for this one, one accident that I came across. God knows how many other, we heard sirens earlier tonight, so God knows how many other calls there were today for below, for both police and fire, but thank you all for responding. Thank you, Danielle.
Councilmember Robati, please, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
Also in the Morrisville, in the Morrisville Elementary area, I have a question about the, the signalized intersection where the, like, it just still doesn't seem to, I don't, I don't really understand how any of this is going to, is going to help us with the actual problem in this area, which is the school backup. And I, I haven't been down there, you know, to get out of the car and take a look, but it looks like there's room there to add. Couldn't we make some type of like a lane on the side there where those cars could back up? I think waiting for a miracle to happen for people to stop driving their kids to school, that doesn't feel like a strategy. And I'm just wondering, is there anything we could do to directly address the fact that those cars back right up twice a day, every day?
Yeah, I think one of the challenges is being able to get more vehicles onto the site for some stacking. You can put in a turn lane, it'll help a little bit, but when you do have it back all the way up to Davis Drive, the turn lane is a little less effective to that point. But it is something that we are looking at to include in the study, that, that turn lane is considered when we're looking at or trying to coordinate with the school for their study on the site to figure out how to get more cars for stacking because there's very minimal stacking going on right now. So most of it is just backing up on the Morrisville Parkway. And then, so the signal itself is not necessarily going to help with the backups that the school pickup, you know, creates, but the signal helps with the pedestrian crossing. So whether it is for people in the neighborhood out for a walk, trying to get places, whether it is out of crossing guard time and students are crossing, that is one of the primary reasons as well for the traffic signal at that particular location.
Okay. On Slide 14, on the Aquatics and Fitness Center area, the signalized intersection, so that's a place I think Councilmember Johnson also brought this up, that's a place where a lot of people do make a U-turn. And so the signalized, the signalized intersection, is that going to include a protected left where people coming from both directions could make a U-turn if they need to or a, or a left? I don't know how many people actually make a left at that intersection, but the U-turns are definitely a thing right there.
Yeah, and so that, that is an option in the consideration for the design of the signal system, that it could be a protected left-hand turn to make sure that people are not taking that risk of a blinking yellow arrow trying to make that turn and, and get in front of the other cars. So that, that'll be a design consideration, but if it, it is something that is, you know, strongly desired, too, we can make sure that that's included, but that'll be, yeah, studied with the signal design.
Okay, so at this point, all we know is that there would be some type of traffic signal there. So then that would also apply to Slide Eight, Davis Drive. So I have some particular concerns about this area, actually, because I, I mean, you know, I don't go all the way down Morrisville Carpenter that much, but I'm, I'm at this intersection every day. And I, I mean, I see the signalized, I see that we're adding a sig, you know, that there's a signal there and everything, but the, the, I'm concerned still about the pedestrians in that area and it doesn't seem like anything that I see here. Like I see the high-visibility crosswalks, but I, I'm, that doesn't give me a lot of, a lot of confidence that the pedestrians won't still be in danger. And I think that with, you know, I think that adding turn lanes just adds a layer of complication there. And I, I mean, I see the, the leading pedestrian interval to signal, but I, it has not been my experience at that intersection that like if you're crossing, for example, right by where the arrow says to Publix, if you're going in the opposite direction of that arrow, the people in, that are turning right at that intersection, I, light, no light, it, it does not matter, pedestrians in the crosswalk are in a lot of danger there. So I'm wondering, is there, I get that people stop seeing like a no turn on red, but is there a signal with a red arrow that turns into a green arrow that would indicate, like you absolutely cannot turn right right now, there's a pedestrian coming and the green arrow would indicate you're fine to turn right? Like something like, does that even exist or?
I think there's probably a lot of different configurations that could exist in that. It's something that I can take back to the consultant as well to see if they have different examples with regard to, you know, the option for turning or if the signal is, if the signal is activated, there is, you know, no turn on red to be able to do something like that. So we can take a look at some additional examples. I think there's another component around driver behavior as well that's a little harder to change and to, you know, unfortunately, vehicles are faster than cars and waiting a few extra seconds. The drivers are not very willing to do that. So, but we can take a look if there's some other types of, you know, ideas for this with regard to the traffic signal. Some of it may be general recommendations. This, as you can see, these are high-level recommendations. Everything does need to go through a thorough engineering and design process as well, but those types of things and concerns can certainly be incorporated.
Okay, I have one more question. The, on Slide Five, where it looks like you're making the actual road, like skinny, you're making the lanes themselves where the cars are smaller. Can you just, I, I understand that the intent is that the cars would slow down and do we have examples of places where that's worked? Because I, like, talk about accidents, I'm feeling like that's just going to lead to more accidents, not slower cars. So that's a big concern. Do you have examples of places where that's worked?
Yeah, and there's been some different research done on traffic calming measures in different places. So the visual narrowing of the lanes does create, you know, people to feel like they need to slow down. I think that's one of the, it depends sometimes on the area, the corridor, is it effective for a little while, is it effective over the long term? There's a variety of different studies for that, but it is a calming measure, a traffic calming measure that has been used in different places around the country. We can pull some more examples as well. I don't know in terms of anything local where we've seen this kind of implemented on a, on a corridor to try to get traffic to slow down, but I can look for more examples on that as well.
I would be specifically interested in a, in a place where it's been tried on a road that's like this road, you know, a long road, fairly, you know, not a lot of like big twists and turns, you know, I just, I, I'd like to, to get some more information on why we think that would work in this context.
Yeah, and there's also, I mean, the opportunity to, painting is a relatively lower cost of various different types of improvements as well. There is the opportunity to try it out, to monitor and to, you know, gather speed data as well to see if it is effective and whether or not this is also something that would be helpful in other portions of the town or not, too. So there is that opportunity to see how, how it does work on a particular corridor, too.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Skargans-Johnson.
So I'm, I'm really impressed.
Let's see it.
I'm really appreciative of as many people weighing in on a lot of these intersections and I don't really want to go through every single one. Some of my questions have already been answered. The only thing I would observe, I, definitely the flashing yellow light. I mean, I definitely agree with Councilmember Johnson that that's a significant concern for me, just even myself driving that, there's a little bit of a blind spot and sometimes I think the cars are going so fast. I have noticed, I run twice a week up the hill after I work at MFC and I've noticed the speeding continues to get worse. I know we're doing everything we can. One area, and I'm curious, we didn't really ask about in the survey, but I've noticed across, when we built the intersection with the red light for the golf course, crossing, I've seen a lot of golfers still not cross over where that intersection is, which just, we had that accident about a year and a half, two years ago. So I just don't know if that's something that we can have a sign or something just to make sure that they know, because, I mean, I look at how fast those cars are coming and someone's carrying a golf cart and they just don't realize it's coming fast. And that's what happened to, I think Ms. Demetrius when she was hit, you know, just hit and she's okay now, but just kind of scary. So we could look into that, that'd be great.
Yeah, are they not crossing at the crosswalk or they're not activating the signal before they cross?
I saw one golfer not activate the crosswalk and walked about, not even, so let's say the crosswalk was right here, they went this way and went away from the crosswalk and crossed over. And I'm like going, the whole reason we have the crosswalk is to hit it so that people can stop and you're not going, you're going away from the crosswalk and that car that was coming, I was running and I stopped and I was like, that car's coming real fast. I mean, that car was going more than the speed limit on Morrisville Parkway. So I hope they got a ticket, but if not, you just got to make sure that people, and this, I, that's not the only time I've seen it. I've seen it like the last month, I've seen that like five or six times. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Skargans-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretem Garamilla.
Thank you. This is a very comprehensive presentation and a lot of good information has been collected. So thank you so much for pulling this all together. A lot of my colleagues have indicated the various challenges with each one of the recommendations. So I wanted to just focus on the first one where we're looking at the cross, crossing between Morrisville Parkway and Davis Drive. We definitely need a right turn lane onto Davis Drive that stacking is very long and to put more movement into the road would be very helpful. Also, that protected left would be important in order to avoid certain accidents. It, it is very, there's a line-of-sight issue with the, the Morrisville Parkway between Cary and Morrisville. It's very difficult if you're trying to take a yellow risk and we've seen several accidents because of that. Panther Creek High School had an intersection with 55 and the road that turned up to the high school and they required a protected red for high school students going to school, you know, during those times when they're coming to school and, and leaving school because of the line-of-sight issues. And also there was a very serious accident and we've had enough accidents in this area that that would be warranted, I would think. The other recommendations, I, you know, support the- The other recommendations, I, you know, support the, the council as well, but I really want to emphasize, if we are to prioritize one of these first, number one would be the quickest one, I think, that would help a lot of the pain points, but then the other ones are important, too. We just need to phase those in. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
Can you remind me who paid for this study?
So it is eighty-twenty split, so Campo paid eighty percent, we paid twenty percent for the study.
Okay. So said that, couple of things, I think many of my colleagues have said it, but Marshall Carpenter, Marshall Elementary School, I think last time I had said, the issue is the school which is causing the stacking. And, you know, is there anything that's been talked to the schools, either to increase their stacking lane or add an additional lane? Because technically, the school has been, let's tell me, what, twenty-five, thirty years now? Like, at the time, traffic was not an issue. Now it is an issue, and their kids' safety is an issue. So I don't know how schools can just let it go with one intersection coming in and saying, you know, like, so what is that? Is there any particular funds as part of the school's safety mechanism to have that, you know, looking for? Because that is, that is my thing, is just, all around our areas, the traffic is only going to increase, not decrease. And, and pedestrian safety, and especially, like, the kids' safety is the most important thing, but I just don't want the school system, we build it, and we're off, you know? So I know the rules of the schools is they would not go over and beyond their compound, but at the same time, it is their stack lanes which is causing the issue. It's the overflow of the stack lane. So either they find a way to have more stacking inside of it, or add an additional line, because the land where you see that 54 is all on Morrisville Elementary School property. So, so I strongly feel that's important. And coming to, I think all the points have been said, the dollar amount, it's close to eleven million dollars. I don't think, I've been in the council, that we have ever paid anything full. It was always a split. And because we have to be cognizant of all the other places all around the town, and, and especially Savannah, where they were putting a traffic light, and the hawk, that's costing close to half a million dollars. So when you're talking the same example, like, three to four traffic lights and hawks and all those things, it just adds up, and we will, there'll be a lot of other places all around the town where people will say, hey, what is a priority on that? So I want to ensure that we are equitably looking, A, we got to figure out, as you rightly said, what is, like, when you apply for Campo, Campo is very competitive, they will not just give everything. So what is that we need now, or might we have mini grants, you know, kind of a thing, go in phases? What is that we can get out of it? And then go behind that, instead of going through a little whole eleven million dollars, I think that's, it's hard to get, I can see that. So, and also, like, we don't have a priority for signation, you know, where the signals are needed. So it will also be good to have that, as we have sidewalk prioritization and, and other things, but we don't have anything where people keep asking about signals and all kinds of other things. But it would be good to at least have a database in the future to see, okay, this is also one place we are continuously getting it. Obviously, the study may not be done, and the study will prove it needs or not, but at least that is there. But I think overall, it's a good presentation, but I would strongly, what is our commitment with the schools? Like, you know, are they, are they positive in, like, doing anything on the stack lane, or they just don't want to do?
Oh, yeah, no, I think there's, they're open to the conversations about it. They also have a process in which they can put in a request for funding to do also their internal study as well. How can they accommodate, you know, more stacking on the site? How can they do some internal circulation? So it's, it's a continued conversation with them, and there are processes to be able to do that. But I do think it's an important piece of this corridor to make things work, so they've been open to those conversations. You know, what can be done onsite or offsite? Those are, you know, some different things, but in terms of having that study to be able to accommodate more cars on the site for pickup will be important as well. And then I, I do echo your concerns about, you know, the cost, I think, on staff's side, too. There's, there's a lot of needs and priorities, and paying full price for, for all of these, we definitely want to find ways to leverage other grants and matching opportunities to be able to do as much as we can on this corridor, or have money for other places, too. So, yeah, definitely recognize that comment.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, I, staff has always been really good about trying to leverage our dollars, and this is just one study of many parts of our intersections, because we have the three different phases of intersection. So we have sort of been prioritizing those as we go.
And this is kind of almost a, a little more of an enhanced look at this area that we looked at before, with a safety component added, a little bit more of a safety component added in.
Yeah, so it's almost like a small-area study. So we're not forgetting about other parts of the town, those are still on our list.
Yes.
We always want more input on that. So what's our next steps? You were a little bit fuzzy about when, we're hearing back from you.
Oh, yeah, so, I mean, we will be putting together the final report, and we did want to make sure that there was no huge issues similar to in March with all those channelized islands, making sure that this, in terms of these recommendations, were generally okay as we move into the finalization of the report, it'll come back. We'll think a little bit more, too, about maybe for that time as well, additional prioritization or any other discussion that might need to happen at that time or following that. So staff will put, put some thought into that as well, and making sure that we have kind of that next step moving forward after the study gets approved.
I would just ask if we can start thinking near-term improvement and long, and midterm improvement?
Yeah, so we can change the wording on that.
Everything sooner, because we've been talking about this, and we were talking about doing this intersection before this study was even approved. So we don't want this to slow us down, but it's great that we've been so thorough, and this will be a safer corridor because of this. It's just a matter of us putting together the resources and making it happen. So thank you so much for all the hard work from you and your whole team.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we invite Town Manager Brandon Zudema to come forward to share the FY 2025 recommended budget for the town of Morrisville. A little drumroll, maybe?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay.
Just perhaps a little patience with me, with coughing and water, so bear with me. Yeah. Thank you. Can you put up the PowerPoint? Please. It's the, no, it's the, should be the presentation, the first one. So, good evening, mayor and members of council, and also good evening to the public that is here and that is watching at home, and those that will hopefully be watching this after the meeting. Pleased to be before you to present the FY 2025 annual operating budget and CIP. You know, each year, we sort of brand our recommended budget, and as we work through this process, it, it took a little while for it to come clear to me. I have sort of these mini epiphanies, if you will, with things, and as we spent a lot of time talking with you through retreat and then through other sessions, you know, what this ultimately came to me, and I think to our team, was that this year is really about investing in Morrisville. And, and we do that every year, but I think the priorities that you have set and helped us realize really speak to investing in this community, investing in programs and services, investing in the staff to make those programs and services happen, is what's really important. And we're going to give you some examples of that as we work through the presentation tonight. Again, I think at this point, we've had a lot of opportunity to talk, so you're familiar with this, but certainly want to also share with our community what this budget is, why it's important, and, and how we arrived there. So it's not just about the budget, but sort of the, how did we get to tonight? So we're going to walk through that. So again, this really started quite a ways back, and I'm going to cover some of the actual process here, but tonight, what we really want to do is present this to you, give you this overview, let the community hear this overview, and then at the conclusion tonight, we'll ask you if you have any particular questions or topics that you would like us to discuss Thursday, this Thursday, the sixteenth, at our first work session. We'll be right back here at six o'clock. That is certainly open to the public. So if you have those topics tonight, doesn't mean you can't bring other topics on Thursday, but that'll give us an opportunity to make sure we're prepared to have those conversations with you on Thursday. And then after that, during that work session, we'll dive more into the specifics of the operating budget, the capital planning that we've done, really talk about resource allocation and how this budget is, it is an FY 2025 budget, but it really looks beyond just FY 2025. So, and, and again, this is a revale year, which means that it creates some, some very important opportunities and some very good opportunities to increase capacity, which then results in better services to the community. So after Thursday, we will then have the public hearing on May 28th. That'll be an opportunity for the public to come in and offer comment. There's also, of course, our online budget portal that can be used. You can also use the public comment, or excuse me, the public hearing email for March, for May 28th as well, so that the community can express their interests, their questions, their concerns about all of this. In the packet tonight for you and the, and the public, there is an FAQ tool that's in there, that has been developing as we've met over time, and we'll continue to update that. So that's things that are about the budget, but that aren't specifically addressed in the budget, so we're answering questions and philosophies and things like that that have come up. And then ultimately, you know, we'll receive final guidance from you, and then we will, in a perfect world, we'll be voting to approve this budget either in May or June. So again, talked a little bit about the process. Again, this, this didn't start in May or April or, or even before that. It really started for us in December, as we started to request information from our department heads and do that mid-year evaluation of, we do it sort of for a bifold purpose. One is to evaluate, where are we within the FY 2024 budget? Are we, are we working on the projects we said we would work on? Are we utilizing the resources that we were provided to do those things for our community? So when we meet with the department heads, we see that information, and then we also ask them to give us a preview of what will be coming in their requests for FY 25. And that gives us a really good chance to start to frame what the requests will be, what the expectations are, and at the same time, we're beginning to look at revenues and other sources of, of resources that we can use to meet those needs. So that has started back as far as December, and then we meet with them, and then, of course, we do vision brainstorming. A lot of that occurred at this year's retreat in January. Again, I thought it was a very successful retreat. You were, you know, completely involved with that and committed to that, and we're very appreciative of that, because we took a lot from that retreat, not only the ten priority areas, but just a lot of other good feedback and a lot of prioritization, a lot of discussion around what was important to you based on your conversations with your constituents. So that was a very good kickoff to really the FY 2025 budget process. We've continued to try to make connections with the public. We have had a budget portal that opened early in the year, we got some feedback through that. And again, as of today, or as of, I guess, Thursday or Friday, that budget portal is open again, and that and links are available on the town website. We encourage people to log on to there and, and share their thoughts with us, and then we in turn will share those thoughts, of course, with you as to what their interests are, what their thoughts are about this budget. And then we are also going to hold some budget open houses coming up. So the first one is actually this Thursday, and I believe it's at eleven o'clock in this building. And then this Saturday at Spring Fest, the budget team will be there with a table to share information and take questions and help people better understand what the budget is. And then I believe our second one is next Tuesday, Wednesday apologized, so Wednesday at six o'clock at Town Hall again. So trying to provide those opportunities in person beyond just the portal and the email opportunity to communicate. We're going to talk some about challenges and opportunities, we have both with this budget. We have a lot of different influences this year, particularly giving the revale, particularly giving changes in inflation that's impacting us, changes in general costs of operation. So we're going to talk a little bit about that, and then tremendous opportunities as well, to be able to expand programs and services and really up our game a little bit as a town, if you will, and in terms of what we're doing with and for the community. Finally, aligning the strategy. So what we've tried to look at is understanding what the priorities are from council, understanding the feedback that we're getting from the public, and then we're aligning that with also the strategic plan, and making sure that we ultimately have a sustainable plan that really delivers outcomes, not outputs. It's easy to do outputs, but we really are focused on making sure that we're doing outcomes that will positively impact the community now and in the future. And you'll see that as we walk through this tonight. And then finally, enacting the plan. Once we get this budget approved, either as a, in a modified version or as presented, we will immediately start to work on that in FY 25. And then, you know, so we really, it's, it's, it's almost a full year-round budget process now, because we'll start working and implementing while we're still trying to close out FY 24, probably through September and October, so, and then by November and December, we're really kicking into FY 26 gear. So certainly a year-round process, and we're, we're looking forward to working through that with you, and we'll share some more information about that with you. The budget review calendar, again, you received a draft of the budget on May 1st for your review. On May 10th, we posted that to the public, along with the budget message. We are here tonight, and I already mentioned the work session on the sixteenth, and then the public hearing on the 28th. There are two additional work sessions that are scheduled that are at your discretion, depending on how our discussions have gone. Those would be May 30th and June 6th, and then tentative budget adoption on June 11th, if you do not take any action at the May 28th meeting. So as I mentioned, one of the things we want to do is highlight the work that's gone on in FY 24, because a lot of that plays to what we do in FY 2025. But also important, I think, that the community understands that the commitments made in the past have been honored, and a lot of good work has been done, and it really is work that provides those opportunities, those amenities, those services to our community. So one of the things we're particularly proud of is Fire Station Three. Again, that was a lot of work on the part of Chief Lozinski and his team to be able to move that crew that was previously operating out of a shared station in Cary back into town, has really improved our response plan and our response times, and I think really has made that crew feel more of the community that they serve, as opposed to coming from outside back into town. And again, that was part of what was the 2021 bond referendum. So again, we are, we are, had increased taxes for that bond, but we are utilizing those funds to do what the priorities were in that bond referendum. Related to that same bond referendum, we opened up Phase Three of Morrisville Community Park and expanded our tennis opportunities and really introduced pickleball to the community, and you now need to plan extra time to wait in line if you're going to pickleball. So very popular, we're very pleased to have that open, and we're already having conversations about what that might look like for us in the future as we go forward with other projects. Again, another park project, this one was ARPA-funded, and that is the Shiloh Park renovation. So that was a new basketball court, a new playground, and some improved fencing and lighting amenities. So that is open now, and is just really added to what was already a very historical and important part of our community, and really upped the game there as well, small pun intended. Cultural activities, we have trouble keeping up with the number of activities that we have going on now, so we've been able to expand the staff in Parks and Rec that's now going to coordinate both cultural and special events. We've had a lot of success there. A lot of kudos go to Mary and her team and to Leslie Haney for the work on expanding that. We had a very suc- We had a very successful launch of our Morrisville Means Business Program in support of small businesses. Again, want to thank Congresswoman Deborah Ross for the funding that really helped that happen. And then of course, our staff worked out on that and have done some collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce as well. And then lastly, again, through ARPA money, we're able to resurface the playground area at Northwest Park. And then there's ongoing work and I'm not going to read each one of these to you, but you will see that the left-hand side is all about transportation and transportation projects. We recognize that that's a priority for the community. We just finished that conversation about Morrisville Parkway. And then on the right-hand side, there are other ongoing work opportunities. Our Morrisville App Phase 3 was funded with ARPA money. That should be completed this summer. You recently approved a sponsorship and naming rights policy, so we'll be working on that. Or excuse me, you'll, you'll approve that tonight potentially. I'm meaning that as myself. We will ideally approve a sponsorship policy tonight that gives us some new opportunities. We've had a lot of conversation about a solid waste fee that will be implemented in FY 26. The murals are going strong. So if you've been around in either at Shiloh Park, at Fire Admin or over at MAFC, they're already looking amazing. Again, kudos to Brittany Johnson and to the Planning Department for the work on that. And that's just the start. There's so much more to come with that that we're very excited about. And then we also have an upcoming project to replace the playground in Morrisville Community Park, a very popular park. And so we're going to put some really cool stuff in there for the, for the young people to play with. So shifting from 24 into 25 now in the guiding budget philosophy. So again, when we went to retreat in January, had a very, very good, I would say primarily council-led conversation around what did the FY 25 budget need to be about? How could we best support the community? How could we best expand services and programs for the community? And so when we came out of that retreat, on the left-hand side, there are the 10 priorities that you identified with us that we wanted to focus on as we work through the FY 25 budget. Again, talking about core services, economic development, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Significant future investments to secure the future as we go forward, improving pedestrian safety, some infrastructure that needed to be done related again to transportation, public safety. We have a budget that's going to enhance both police and fire services, sustainability, technology innovation, transit mobility and welcoming and placemaking, still a really important part of who we are as a town and what we do with and for our community. And that's one of the things that I will tell you that I really enjoy about being here is that it's not, we're not growing so big that we leave something like that behind. We still have the ability and the opportunity to support that and we're working on the number of ways. One of those is just up the street with the Town Center, which is going to be a wonderful way to welcome people to the community. On the right-hand side, you know, we've had a couple of work sessions now. So you helped us better define what your priorities and interests were as we went into developing this recommended budget. So you again, not, not different necessarily, just more detailed from the left-hand side. Again, focus on those reserves for future investments and you're going to see that in this recommended budget in the area of parks, transportation, land acquisition and debt commitment to make sure that we give capital projects. The land acquisition is there. Public Works Facility Replacement, that is a long overdue project that you have all expressed a commitment to and we're supporting that through the budget. Transportation investments continue. Pedestrian safety is highlighted. Again, Danielle spoke to some of that in her presentation. We've looked at parks, part-time staff, market conditions to make sure that we are addressing that. That's been a lot of discussion over the last couple of years. But again, Mary and her team and with leadership from John have really been able to develop that to where we feel we're going to be really at market and really treating all of our staff the way they should be treated in terms of compensation and holding on to those part-time staff as much as we can. We've also looked at impacts from new facilities and grounds. Several of you have reminded us that we need to not make sure that we don't lose sight of that, that as we grow, we need to add staff and resources to make sure we're maintaining our parks and other amenities and that's included in this budget as well. Economic development strategy and fiscal sustainability. So we have recommendations to establish an economic development department and we'll work on that and still some opportunities again to collaborate with the chamber. And then finally, technology advances. You know, we have an incredible smart city program. We have an incredible staff in IT that are leading that. We're at the forefront in so many ways in technology and in innovation that I know you were proud of and I'm also very proud of our team and what they can do there. So as we move forward with this budget and look at FY 25 and beyond, we've got both challenges and opportunities. So some of the challenges, I think it's important to highlight those because they're, they're relevant to what we do and how we do it. The revaluation process resulted in a more than a 40% increase in values across the town and more than 55% in residential. So that, that's a challenge to, to be able to recognize that, acknowledge that and, and use that prudently and intelligently to our advantage while also keeping in mind the residents and the taxpayers. We are seeing like, like virtually every community is significant inflationary increases in really just general operations and also in capital. We've had any number of conversations about different projects that we have done our best and, and not just us, but even our estimators, we've hired professional staff to help us with that and still have challenges because the, the, the economy is so fluid right now. Again, we've talked about those ARPA funds and those are no longer available to us. So we got about a $9 million ARPA infusion. And so we are obligated to have encumbered those funds by the end of this calendar year and we are in the process of wrapping that up and we will do that. And then they will have to be spent by the end of calendar year 26 and that will also be accomplished, but there's no more $9 million behind that. So what we did use some of that for revenue replacement. We also had a real opportunity to use that for good things in the community and to do things we might not otherwise have been able to do. So we just have to make sure we're staying creative and, and really inventive in how we use the resources that we have going forward without that money there. Again, competing priorities. So we had 18 and a half, almost $19 million in requests for new things this year. The good news is we're going to fund a good portion of those, but we're not going to fund all of that. And so it's always an apples versus oranges versus pineapple conversation of, you know, how do you evaluate what's more important? And so, you know, again, I'm very appreciative of our team that helped us work on that, including our department heads who made really good justifications and arguments, not, not who writes it prettiest, but really what's the most important and what's the impact if we do it? What's the impact if we don't do it? And that's what's led to what's prioritized in this budget for FY 25 and looking beyond. And then the, the, the market for skilled and talented people is incredibly challenging. I mean, that's not just us, that's everyone. But again, I would applaud you because of your commitment to our staff and to making sure that they are at market and they're treated well and that we have a good place, a good environment for them to work and that's important to them. And I know that they recognize that and they thank you for that. They've shared that with me. So, but, but the other side of that is that it does cost money to remain competitive in that. And so we have included that in this budget as well. The good news is there's lots of opportunities beyond those challenges. So currently we have made requests for over $4.5 million in grant funding. We won't know all of that until, you know, much later in the year. And some of that is smaller grants, some of that is some big chunks that we've asked for primarily through some of the federal earmark opportunities that are out there. So we've worked with, again, Congresswoman Ross and other of our elected officials at the state and federal level to make those requests. Mentioned the solid waste fee that we will implement in FY 26. So that gives us another opportunity in the following fiscal year to have some opportunities to expand. We have made a commitment to a living wage. You have, you have brought that to us and expressed that as a, as a concern or a priority for you. So the Wake County Living Wage for FY 25 is $45,500 and each one of our full-time employees will make a minimum of $45,500. And I would say that the majority of our employees make well above that, but we will not have a single full-time employee that will make less than what's defined as living wage. And I think that's a significant step for us that will continue in the future. The recommended budget includes $4.75 million in additional capacity. And again, we, we're going to make an effort tonight to show the community and, and you've seen it, but we'll show you again, why that's important and the good that we can do with programs and services and expansion to see the community benefit from that and have the community they want to live, work, play and learn in. Again, we also have about $7.3 million within this budget that is related to one-time costs. Now that's not entirely available again next year because that includes things that we don't include in the base budget, primarily debts, excuse me, future investments, debt payments, things of that nature. But we do it that way so there's flexibility so that if there were a tight year, that could be adjusted if necessary. But even with that, I think we're at about $2 million of FY 25 money that is one time that we'll be able to consider for use in FY 26, along with the funds that will come available with a solid waste fee. And of course, we'll still have naturally occurring revenue growth as well. And then again, we continue to see a solid average growth of about 4% in, in the budget and in the economy here. Mentioned property revale, just to share a little bit more background with you and with the community. Overall, it's a 40%, greater than a 40% increase across the town of Morrisville and that's consistent across the county. That is not just us, that is, that is increases across the county. So again, we're, we're very fortunate in a sense that we have a very solid mix of residential and commercial. We actually have a little more commercial than residential in our community. That is not the case in a lot of communities and that's a real asset to us. And so what we saw, as I mentioned, was that residential increased overall 55% in value. Land increased 58% in value and commercial on average increased 37%. So significant increases from the property revale. So what that looks like for us in our tax base, so for FY 25, we have a $9,455 million estimated tax base. And again, already shared the growth rate of 4%. So our average annual growth amount is about $1.1 million that comes out of that. The FY 2025 neutral tax rate, revenue neutral rate would be 30 cents per $100. Our current rate is 39 cents per $100 evaluation and the recommended budget is a 35 cent tax rate. The new ad valorem revenue, at revenue neutral is $27 million and our new penny value, previously it was about $685,000 and after the revaluation, a penny is now worth approximately $950,000. So where, where does this money that we're asking for go? And where does it come from? So we'll start with the revenues. Again, ad valorem is the most significant tax, or excuse me, the most significant revenue that we have. That's property tax coming in at about 57% of the total budget and that's a 22% increase from last year primarily because of the revaluation. Intergovernmental, including sales tax is about $15 million. That's our second largest revenue at about 26%. And then we have a number of smaller revenues there, some restricted funds. We get permitted fees, some sales and services, $500,000 in miscellaneous earnings. We do generate just below a million dollars in investment earnings right now from what we have set aside. Transfers in represent $2.2 million. And then this year, we're programming about $1.5 million of fund balance. That is still well below our 3% threshold that we try to stick to. We're about 2.6, 2.7% in that use. So the total revenues that we anticipate for FY 25 are $58,190,000. And again, that's about a 21% increase overall from FY 2024. And then we spend that money in turn. And so you will see that we are spending $58,190,000. So as we would of course prefer to, and as the state requires us to, we have recommended a balanced budget. So of those expenditures, breaking them down, general government, and that's sort of all the other departments. So admin, HR, IT, budget, finance, communications, totals just under $10 million, about a 15% increase from last year. Development services, almost $6 million, again, an increase from last year. Public works and facility management, almost $10 million, an increase from last year as well. Public safety, $18 million. There's a 21% increase there and that is because of adding some positions to expand services and enhance the work they're already doing. Parks and Rec is about $4 million. That's an increase there as well and that's part of adding staff to be able to expand programming and to better balance the workload and to offer a new and innovative approaches to things, including special events, cultural events and others. And then the transfers out, and that's really our commitment to reserves, to debt, to the healthcare fund and to the municipal service district that is yet to be completed. And that's about $10 million as well. So all totaled again, a $58,190,000 in expenditures for FY 25 and that represents a balanced budget. Very quickly, Stormwater is our one enterprise fund. So this year's FY 25's recommended budget is $1.34 million, a slight increase over last year. And again, that goes to personnel, to operations, also some capital outlay so that we have a CIP program for Stormwater. And then the total again, 1.34 million and that's based off a steady ERU of $50. And one of my last slides before I turn it over to Byron to talk a little bit about the future. Our debt reserve, excuse me, debt service reserve fund is getting about $6.5 million. That includes a penny that's added this year at the value of about $950,000 and that is for current and future debt. Again, you'll see the CIP tonight that goes out five years and that's what that money is supporting. Healthcare premium fund, we spent about $2.7 million on that to provide healthcare premiums. Other post-employment benefits is about $680,000 and that's primarily retirement healthcare benefits. And then finally, the LEO separation allowance, a little under $200,000 for those post-employment retirement for law enforcement officers as mandated by the state. So as I mentioned, this year we had about $18.5 million in requests, about $9 million in recurring, nine and a half in one time. Of that, we're able to fund 14.5 million in this recommended budget. So we, we missed on about $4 million that could have been added to the budget based on requests. And again, I would tell you that our department heads and our leadership team are very specific about making sure that those are requests for needs and then really not a lot of wants in there beyond trying to support council's vision, the strategic plan and what the community has expressed as their interest. So there's, I would say not a lot of fluff in those requests. That, that 18 and a half million dollars is legitimate things that would improve our community, improve our departments and our ability to serve. So within the 14.5 million that we are able to fund in the recommended budget, that includes about 7.15 million in new one-time requests. Again, about two of that is actually available for new spending in next year in the FY 26 budget. And then we've got about 7.35 that's recurring that will continue in future years. Do want to highlight where the money is going in this recommended budget as far as our new investment of about 14 and a half million. So first is future investments, refer to this a little bit, adding a penny or $950,000 to a debt reserve to pay for primarily the future public works facility, but we've also got other things coming after that. We have a Town Center project, we have dog park, we have other future construction projects that are in that CIP. And then we were also increasing the capital reserves. So you have previously had a parks and a transportation reserve that were each funded at a penny, which was about $685,000. And then this year, they're going to be increased each to $950,000. And you've also asked to add a land acquisition reserve. That money has been spent somewhat recurring over the past several years as you've asked us to be proactive in identifying those opportunities. So that land reserve will allow that to be a funded source rather than necessarily relying on fund balance as well. Talent investment, we're going to spend about $2 million on staff and that's a critical investment in the staff that we have now and the staff that we will recruit and want to retain. So really that is about the talent pipeline, about keeping those emerging leaders and emerging managers and supervisors here. It is about recruitment and getting people in the door and then keeping them here. Already mentioned that we're looking at a living wage and then also, excuse me. We are looking at managing the health insurance and other benefit increases so that they don't negatively impact our staff as well. And again, some of that is because of the foresight that Jeannie and Martha, our former time manager, had several years ago when we moved to the end ship program to establish that reserve. When we moved to the end ship program to establish that reserve. Fire public safety enhancements, about two point five million dollars. That includes three additional firefighters that would start the first of the year. And that is part of the continuing effort. Council has a commitment to support the fire department in reaching N F P A standards. For the number of firefighters on each apparatus that goes out. So this will help with that, get us closer to that standard and get us closer to having consistently solid staffing on the apparatus. That's important not only for firefighter's safety, but also important for their effectiveness on the scene and their ability to do what they need to do. Also recommends a battalion chief for data analytics and resource planning. As the fire department continues to evolve, that is a critical role in how they look at their response times and their response plans and how they serve the community. And that's being done really happenstance right now by sort of whoever has five minutes jumps in and does that. And so we want to make sure they have that resource to be able to consistently do that. That's related to not only the safety in the community, but also holding our I S O one rating. And making sure that they also remain an accredited fire department. And those are all benefits to our community, particularly the I S O rating, which helps keep insurance rates down. And then there's some other tools that the firefighters need to do their work safely. In the police public safety enhancements, this adds staff to allow them to establish a permanent impact team. We have used that, Chief Acosta has used that on occasion on a part time basis or a temporary basis. And we have seen real support out of that, real results out of that. So what they will focus on is things that the public might not always see that are there, but are maybe going on in the background. So it gives us a team to dedicate to going after those problems as they arise. That sometimes the patrol officers just don't have time to address because they're busy answering calls for service and doing other things. So this is two positions in the police department to support that impact team. And they'll reassign two other staff members from within the department to that team as well. And then again, some money to support some of the tools they need to do their work. And for you and particularly for the public, if they have access to the budget report and budget message. There's more detail on this on page thirty one of that document as well. So continuing with community investment, capital and operational increases, unfortunately, things continue to get more expensive. So we're talking about our solid waste contract. We're talking about things as simple as janitorial services, other things landscaping that we contract out for all get more expensive. So most of those are situations where we don't really have the opportunity to make a decision there. You either have it and pay what the price is, or you you don't necessarily get the service. That also includes some additional staff for our public works department, particularly in the grounds maintenance area. You know, again, we have already opened M C P phase three, we've expanded Shiloh. We're getting ready to open the Church Street Southern Lot as well as the Dog Park. And they were, I would say, minimally staffed before we added all that. So we want to make sure they have the resources to continue to keep those amenities up, not just to an acceptable level, but to a Morrisville level. And where people come to expect that we have great amenities and we do. And this will ensure that as we add more amenities, that we have the staff to keep them looking good. Sustainability is a focus area. We are committed to that as a community. We are committed to that through our public works department and our sustainability program. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards solar expansion. Our next projects will be solar on Town Hall and solar on M A F C. And then prepping of other buildings to continue adding solar. The Stormwater Department is doing some improvements that contribute to overall sustainability. With some work on some greenways and the the waterways that go through there and doing some some maintenance and some upgrades there. And then we are continuing to focus on doing E V and hybrid. So this budget includes money for some electric mowers in public works. And also the purchase of hybrid vehicles as much as we can get our hands on them. Been very challenging for the public works department to get those of late. We have tried to go to all hybrid in the police department for response vehicles. But the last one or two orders that we placed were canceled. No, no, thanks. We'll get them to you later. Just don't, not going to do it. So this, this window opened, and again, you helped us with that a couple of weeks ago. And gave us an opportunity to preorder those now rather than having to wait for the new fiscal year when the window may have closed. So we're committed to hybrid vehicles and and continue to add E V vehicles as well in different departments. Economic and fiscal sustainability. So there's a four hundred thousand dollar investment in the development of an economic development department. And that will include two positions, an economic development director that would be new to the town. And then also the sort of evolution of the small business specialist. So you'll recall probably two years ago, we got a grant from Congresswoman Ross's office for small business support. That included the addition of a part times, small business person specialist. So Sarah Ellis was here and worked with some of our other staff and with the Chamber of Commerce to launch a lot of good things around small business support. So that'd be a secondary component of our economic development strategy. And then we'll have the opportunity to really become more proactive in our efforts. And to build a true economic development program for the town that I fully anticipate will pay for itself quickly. Through additional investments, through retention of existing businesses and other efforts. The last focus areas on these ten priorities that you identified. Transportation, as you've already heard tonight, there's a lot going on with transportation. We continue mobility planning and enhancements. We continue to collaborate with D O T to do betterments on some of their projects. And we're still committed to finishing up Morrisville Carpet and Road with the installation of a traffic light and also a Hawk device there. Work continues on Morrisville Parkway and a number of other projects that are in town. This this recommended budget includes funding for a comprehensive transportation plan update. To make sure that that is current and reflecting what our future should be and that we build it that way and construct it that way. And then this also has some smart shuttle expansion and additional amenities related to that program as well. Meaningful connections, about three hundred thousand dollars. Again, the language access plan, we're really proud of that, the work that Giselle and others put into that. So we also are pleased to share that we have been selected to host a U N C fellow. That will join us in probably August and will be here through May of next year. And they'll be committed to the implementation of that language access plan, which I think is really important. Given the cultural diversity of our community and your stated desire and our commitment to work with each one of those community members. Particularly making sure that we're overcoming any communication or language barriers. So that everyone feels comfortable and everyone feels involved in our community. Also affordable housing, there is funds available in the FY twenty five recommended budget for rental assistance. And then again, you'll also hear an update on Thursday from Habitat for Humanity related to what that might hold for the future as well. Already talked about the mural program. There is money for a website update to make sure that that's a current and user friendly website that people can take good advantage of. And then we're also including some software at M A F C to help them better provide service to some of the folks that take classes. And an easier method of making reservations and filling holes and things like that with classes. And then finally, technology innovations, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, increasing our service support. And doing some hardware replacements, we do that on a recurring basis. This does include the generative A I kickoff for the town. Again, the ultimate goal there is to have a town based A I system. That allows both our staff and our community to easily access documents and information and reports and other things that are public information. And then also continuing to do security enhancements primarily in our parks, but also across the town as well. And again, just a reminder, a lot more detail on that in the budget report. Page starts on page thirty one. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Byron to talk a little bit about long term. And then we'll come back and take any questions. And again, ask you if there's any priorities you'd like us to prepare for a Thursday night discussion. Thank you, Byron.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You all have seen this slide before, but we did want to update it a little bit given. Thirty five cent tax proposal in the manager's recommended budget. Wanted to give you all a sense of the capacity that we have moving forward into the future years. Currently in this chart, the expenses are the same as you initially saw. But I did take out the three and the seven cent models just so that you could see that thirty five cent model there. As it goes from fiscal year twenty five to twenty eight and then potentially what we might see in our next revaluation. Right now, we're projecting the next revaluation at roughly about twenty percent increase as compared to the forty percent increase this year. We do anticipate it to go down some, so we are trying to be a little bit more conservative. While still maintaining the idea that we could still see. Still a fairly significant amount of an increase in that revaluation. So I wanted to give you all a sense of what capacity might look like in that fiscal year twenty nine and twenty thirty. Moving on, we also wanted to take a look at the budget requests and what we can see in that long range projection for the next three years. As the manager stated, we received about eighteen and a half million dollars worth of budget requests from departments. And we were able to fund fourteen and a half million. What that means is that there were four million dollars worth of requests that could not be funded this year. And have to be deferred until fiscal year twenty six. So based on the requests that we received, both recurring and one time requests in fiscal year twenty six. We would see a projected fifteen million dollars worth of new requests. In addition to the four million dollars worth of deferred requests from this year totaling nineteen million. Moving on to twenty seven, we see a new request at about fourteen million dollars. And just like this year, if there's anything that is not funded in fiscal year twenty six, we would continue to see some deferments of budget requests. What that is right now, we can't exactly say, given that we don't know what that fiscal year twenty six will give us. But right now, just wanted to give you all just an illustrative sense of what we can look forward to in the future. And what the current needs are for the community and the town. Just as we did with budget requests, also wanted to take a look at staffing requests in the same long range projection model. This year, we received about twenty seven position, new position requests. We were able to fund thirteen of them, eleven full time and two thirty hour positions. Essentially, what that means is that we do have some positions that had to be deferred for fiscal year twenty six, just as the budget requests. And as a result, we see nine new positions in fiscal year twenty six, plus those eight deferred positions. And ten positions requested in potentially requested for fiscal year twenty seven. How that breaks down dollar, dollar wise is that it's roughly about a one point nine million dollar recurring amount for fiscal year twenty five. A one point one potential million dollar potential recurring amount in fiscal year twenty six. And nine hundred thousand dollar potential recurring amount in fiscal year twenty seven. That's factoring in all those positions in all those years. So obviously, that's not a number that's set in stone. But a number that could potentially be there for fiscal year twenty six and twenty seven. Again, this is illustrative. It's not meant to be permanent. It's just meant to kind of give you a sense of where we can go in the future. Additionally, want to talk a little bit about the capital improvement plan. This proposed C I P is roughly ninety seven million dollars. This year's C I P is a refresh. We did a full rework of the C I P last year. Just wanted to give you a sense of kind of where we sit in these five years moving forward and how these projects would be funded. One thing to point out is that as you can see, some of these years are a little bit more lopsided than others. While that is the case, we do feel confident in the debt model that we put together, that we have the ability to fund and maintain these projects in this plan. And that's due just to the hard work of finance and budget staff as well as Jeannie to be able to work with our financial advisors. To prepare a model that is sustainable for the future for the town. And then moving forward, just kind of taking a look at the budget highlights for this year. We do see about a ten percent revenue growth in the fiscal year twenty five budget. That is also due to the fact that we are recommending a thirty five cent tax rate, which generates about four point eight million dollars in new resources. We see the average home value for the town grow from about three hundred and seventy thousand to about five hundred and seventy thousand. So roughly about a fifty four percent increase. In addition to this, all the additional information in the budget, we do have about one point five million dollars budgeted for. Utilizing fund balance as a budgeting tool in this budget. It's a little bit under three percent as the manager stated. And currently, the fund balance is estimated, available fund balance estimated just under forty percent at about thirty nine point seven percent. A lot of the factors that cause it to go down a little bit is just due to the increase in the budget. As well as some other restricted revenue sources that that we see. So we're continuing to monitor that and we should have a bit more information as the year goes on as to what that fund balance number will be, that available fund balance number. We do see about seven million dollars in this budget and future investments. Those are our investments to our various reserve funds, the parks, transportation. Our fire reserve as well as the land reserve, as well as additional debt that is used to be able to fund the town needs in the future. We see the base budget increase roughly about sixteen percent this year to about fifty point eight million dollars. And we, as stated a second ago, and the manager stated, we have about fourteen and a half million dollars worth of budget requests that are funded in this budget. Twenty, it's, that is roughly about twenty five percent of the general fund budget, which is scheduled for new programs and enhanced services. Also want to talk a little bit about upcoming community engagement. The manager mentioned this already as well. But do want to point out in the next couple of weeks, we do have several opportunities for community engagement. Not only is the budget portal open, but we also have additional opportunities in for social media engagement. That our communications department has been leading. We also have a few open houses coming up. As the manager stated, we have one coming up on Thursday in Town Hall. We also have an information table at Spring Fest, so there's opportunities for in person engagement with the community. We will also have or plan to have a information table at the Aquatics and Fitness Center. For any members of the community who want to come by and provide any sort of guidance or information about the budget as well. And with that being said, definitely want to turn it back over to the manager to give us any closing remarks.
Thank you, Byron. So again, I think as I, as I close this introduction. Feel strongly that this is a good budget for Morrisville. It's a balancing act, it always is, between the resources we have and the resources that we might want to have. You know, this is again, is a unique year with the revale. I think you have been, you have given us very good guidance in what you feel is important. And what you feel that is a balance with the needs of the community and taking into consideration. You know, also the folks that are paying these taxes as each of you are, as I am, as others are. So we want to share with the public that this again, is an investment in the community. This is an investment in expanding programs, in expanding public safety, making sure that we're providing those key services. We're investing in transportation. We're doing things in our parks to make sure they're maintained well, to continue to expand them. A lot of good work on the horizon in addition to what's already been going on. And so I'm pleased to share this recommended budget with you. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. And I would also ask again, if you are anything particular that you feel you would like to discuss at Thursday's work session. We'd be happy to note that now and make sure we're prepared for that conversation, including potentially getting you some information ahead of Thursday.
Great thorough presentation. And we really appreciate getting it so early in May and had a long time to really review it. We'll start off with Mayor Tim Garamola, please.
Again, you know, as the mayor said, your first budget presentation, excellent job.
Thank you.
And Byron too, and Jeannie and.
It's easy when you're working with a great team.
Yeah, it takes a lot of effort to pull this together, I think, to the entire staff who have worked, not even just the leadership, but the department heads to come.
Yes, everyone.
So a couple of questions from my side is, one is, thanks for this P P I L that you have given this. I think it gives sufficient time for our council to read through it. But I am interested to see how we can utilize this because the legislative has given us authority to. Increase it. And but at the same time, we've got to be very cognizant of what and how much it is, you know. The one thing that came to my mind is, as this budget is, the cost of buying anything, especially the land in this area is relatively very, very high. And the formulas of how it is getting calculated is not competitive enough for us to use. The word P P I L where we are not able to sustain the cost of buying. for us to use the word PPIL, where we are not able to sustain the cost of buying properties or putting parks. The whole idea of PPIL is 300 unit apartment, okay, you don't need to do it, we'll take that money and buy somewhere, you know, or invest in our parks. But the money that we are getting is not even cutting, I don't know, 20%, 30% of really the cost, you know, of what the current trend is. But it is important for us to be equitable and ensure our formulas are rightly affecting as a policy, not trying to increase, say for the sake of increasing, and to be adjusted correctly. That is one of the things I wanted to talk on Thursday, if we can.
I would encourage you, please take time to read that memo, Michelle. You know, we gave her all sorts of time to work on that like usual, but she did a fantastic job in putting that together on really short notice, that we could have that ready for you tonight. I think that'll really help us with a better conversation on Thursday. But if you would, would politely ask you, you take a look at that. And I think it'll answer some of your questions. It may probably generate some questions, but that's good because it'll kick off a good conversation on Thursday.
Yeah, that's one of the things, I think, I'll give it to others to say, but...
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation, Byron and Breagan. And a question on Slide 24, and as it relates to a sentence on page 10 and the binder we gave us. So on Slide 24, the section on fund balance, it says projected at less than 3%. And then in the binder, page 10, it says, pounds of utilized fund balance in this manner during the past five fiscal years, with no actual expenditure of fund balance over the course of the year. So does that mean that when you're balancing the budget each year, you project that you're going to use a certain percentage of the fund balance?
That is exactly right. So what, if I could, you know, what we do is, again, we still, we, the biggest piece of that is that we budget for full staffing. And as much as I would love to see that happen one day, I don't know that that will ever happen. So between that and the fact that, you know, sometimes we see savings on projects, I know that hasn't seemed as much of late, but occasionally that does occur. And just, you know, sometimes projects may not come in where we thought they would. We may not spend a little bit here or there to do things. So what that's saying to you is, over five years, it's really not use of the fund balance, it's really a budget balancing tool. And I think that's how Byron described it. So we list that because we're required to give you a balanced budget, and which we have. But what that means, at the end of the year, we never spend 100%. You know, we've seen over the last couple of years, actually a concerted effort on the part of staff to make sure that we're back into the 90th percentile of spending of the annual budget. Because if you don't do that consistently, you know, the committee's going to ask questions about, well, if you don't spend the money, why do you need the money? So we're making sure that we're making efficient use of that, but there's always going to be some money left over that doesn't get spent, if nothing else, then vacancies for personnel.
Okay. That's good to know, because it always seems like when the budget's presented that way, it's always, it seems to me like it's presented like with a bit of concern that, oh, but we're having to use a little bit of fund balance to balance the budget, like we don't want to do it, which understand, you don't want to. But it's good to know that we end up not using it. So, but then your sentence, you're saying, for this year's budget, we are again projecting that we are using less than, we're, we're projecting that we're going to use less than 3% of the, our fund balance to balance the budget this year.
Correct.
Okay. But the past five years, we've ended up not using it.
Right. We've taken a very similar approach. It varies. We generally have tried not to go above that 3%, but it's always been returned to the fund at the end of the year.
Okay.
And sometimes with more than what we budgeted out of fund balance.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
I don't see anyone else, but I would just go ahead and almost piggyback on that a little bit. The fact that we are allocating that fund balance means that if, for example, we actually adjusted property tax rate more and didn't have that, that tool, we would actually be actively, proactively replenishing our fund balance. So that's the thing, we're not building it as much to the 45%, which is our stated goal, so that we have enough to do things as the opportunities arise during the year. So it's more of a budgetary accounting thing, but in the big term, the more money we have in our savings account, the more flexible and agile we can be over the coming year. So that's just a small thing that I just wanted to share. Would anyone else like to respond to what we've heard? Have staff prepare any other ideas for Thursday? Because Thursday will be a big one for us, because then the next meeting after that is our public hearing. So we want the residents to know what we're thinking, and if they don't hear much else, we're pretty content with what we're seeing. And it seems okay. I'll recognize Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Robati. And then Johnson.
I'm going to hold off on any specific questions until, but I, I think it's a great budget. Want to thank you all for your hard work. The, for full disclosure to the council and the public, I will not be able to be here on Thursday, although I'm going to try to dial in remote. So I apologize for that and to the public. But I'll try my best to be here. In terms of the, one question logistically, when is the next open, open house in the Town Hall? Is that in a few weeks?
That is this Thursday.
This Thursday, okay.
So we will hold all of our public events prior to the public hearing on the 28th, so that you have that feedback going into that public hearing.
Okay. So the first one will be here before the work session. The only input, you know, I'm really excited about the economic development. I think to the extent that we can, as a council, continue to have a discussion with the chamber, with other stakeholders. Recently, as I've been driving around Morrisville, you know, I said this earlier today at the TCC meeting, looking at Perimeter Park and increasing vacancy with Microsoft not renewing one of their leases, I think, you know, the economic development component, I never thought about it, but I started thinking about RTP and how they activated the frontier and, and box yard, and how that's really made a difference from our economic development. I know we're working on the town center, but these other areas in Morrisville, particularly Perimeter Park, and I know you've been having discussions with others, but that definitely comes to mind from an economic development perspective. So that's something I'd like us to think about. And the small business support, as I'd said earlier, you know, 431 million of tax incentives that were, that had not been met because companies didn't meet the performance targets. So I think that's, you know, Invitae was the one in Morrisville that's, you know, pulled out. So to the extent we can support small businesses, repurpose these areas, you know, I think would be great. So that's just something, so my question is, what would be the process of this in terms of the kinds of things we'd want this economic development person to focus on? Are we going to have a work session on that, or are we going to?
So I think there's several things with that. You know, we will, we will be finalizing a job description for that, and we'll be working with Wake County Economic Development and with our consultant that will both support us in making sure we have a good today's world job description for Economic Development Director. We will advertise that as soon as the budget is approved, to get that moving, to have that person here as soon as we can in a perfect world in July-ish. And then that person will then help us in the selection of the small business specialist. So once the Economic Development Director is on board, then we will use that person to come with you. We'll review the information previously provided by our consultant, and we'll let you, you know, have a refresh around that, and then let you give some direction as to what areas you'd like to prioritize moving forward with economic development, and then we'll put that person to work.
Okay.
Sure.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Johnson, please.
Yeah, I am substantively, substantively happy with what I'm seeing here. And I think part of it is because we really do, I mean, we talk about this, we talk about it starting in the retreat in January, you start talking about it earlier, and I really do think that this budget reflects the values that we've, that we've expressed to you and the, the projects that we're interested in. I'm happy about the, the immediate projects and services that we're going to be able to put into effect with this budget. But really, what I'm more happy about is the kind of the, the saving for a rainy day. I'm happy about the money going toward the, the public works. I'm happy that we're, we're continuing to fund the reserves. I think that's all really, really important. And, you know, I think that, you know, that's kind of the side of the budget where, you know, it's not sexy, but it's very, very important because we don't want to have to get, in the next few years, when we don't have a revale, and we don't have an opportunity to recoup capacity naturally, that's when that's going to become important. So, you know, it, I mean, it feels like a big hit now, and I would like to make sure that we're really clearly messaging to the public that it's not just a budget for today, it's a budget for tomorrow. And I think you, I really do think that you and your team have done a really good job. You know, you and Byron's been a great addition to the team.
Thank you.
And Jeannie, I mean, but, you know, congratulations, first budget, first budget letter, first proposed budget. I'm really pretty happy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Strongin Johnson, please.
So I got to give my kudos to, to, to both of you for your first budgets here in the town of Morrisville. Thank you very much. You did an outstanding job tonight. I'm going to give you one, one constructive critique on Slide 4, where you talk about the budget work sessions, and you call them budget work session 1, 2, 3. We really have already had many budget work sessions coming into tonight. Counsel has already talked a lot.
That's, that's very fair.
A lot about this budget and, and what's in it, what maybe is not in it, and, and to Councilmember Robati's point, what, what this means for the future. And you've been, Byron, you've done a great job at that, too, taking us down the next couple of years, too. So I appreciate that. But, and, and that's just me being kind of picky about that, because we have done a lot of work already. So not that you need to go back and change this, but I just want the public to know that counsel has weighed in a lot, beginning, in the beginning of the year from retreats, so.
Excellent point. Thank you. We probably should correct this to like 4, 5, and 6 or something.
Eight, nine, and 10.
Yeah, pre-budget work sessions.
Gotcha.
Because I, I would tell you, I, I don't, we haven't had this conversation yet, but there's a potential that we will cancel some of these. And so, you know, if we do that, that doesn't mean council is not willing to talk about it. It means we have already talked about it, and we're to the point now where we've, we're, we're good to go. So...
Excellent point. Thank you.
But thank you. Fabulous job, all of you. Jeannie, great job, too. So thank you.
Councilmember Strongin Johnson, please.
Thank you. Great work. This is a very significant milestone in the journey for the budget, budget being the single most important deliverable we have all year long. And it does add a lot of value back to the public, but it also does state that we are investing in our people, our staff, and we've also listened to their voices, because we weren't able to meet everybody's request, but we were able to meet quite a few, and also in a way that will help build the future and other considerations for future years. So that's very helpful. So I, I'm looking forward to Thursday and getting into some more details. But overall, this has been a real challenge to put together. I'm sure there's a lot of requests, but I, I'm looking forward to just reviewing it further. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be interested on Thursday, just having a little discussion about where we are on the Veterans Memorial, and if there would be any benefit with us helping to facilitate them keeping that moving forward in a meaningful way. So that's more of a general, see where we are, if there's interest in doing more to help them.
Okay.
Councilmember Ralph, please.
I agree with that, and that's going to be, I mean, I think, I would like to explore how the town can assist. And then another potential roundtable item is I want to, I want to reevaluate kind of what the committee's doing and how we can help the committee. So I think there may be, in my opinion, it needs to be some kind of a reset.
Okay.
And you mentioned roundtable. Remind me, roundtables are part of this Thursday as well?
No, sir.
I, I thought not.
No, you'll hear, you'll have the, a work session on affordable housing. Habitat will be back. We'll do them first, and then we'll move into the budget. Those are the two topics for Thursday.
Okay. I'm looking around for anyone else who wants to share something at this time. And I think, as was mentioned, a lot of the work has been done and recognized and, and put into a really great format. We're looking forward to hearing people's thoughts. There won't be public address on Thursday.
Correct.
We're always open to the budget portal, so please start sending your info now. It's my understanding this will be ready on, well, Friday is when this will be posted. So we hope that people will come back and look at it.
Yes.
And really start to dig into the, there's a lot of pages and lots of data. But if people just read the budget message, I think that says a lot. So I'd request any residents who are really interested in the budget, go ahead and read that budget message, take out what you think is really important, and share with us if you think we're on the right track or not. We want to hear from as many people as possible. Thank you very much for the council, for all the work since the retreat. Thank you to staff for all the work you've been doing and that you're going to continue to do as we finish this up.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple of quick things before the break. Are we okay to?
Break.
Okay. Yep. We're, let's go ahead and take our break a little bit early. We're scheduled for 10 minutes. Is that going to be sufficient for people?
This is not early.
Well, according to the red line, we usually break by now. Let's, let's reconvene at 8:30, please. So give us a little less than 15 minutes. please. So give us a little less than 15 minutes. Okay. Okay, we're coming back into session at this time. At this time, we're at Item 9, Public Address. Interim Town Clerk Parker Evans will now present any public comments received.
We have not received any public comments nor any emails or public comments.
Okay, and no one signed up? Is there anyone here in the room who'd like to speak for three minutes in public address? Okay, if you please approach the microphone, your name and your address, residential address for the record. Just keep in mind, we have a public hearing on the budget in two weeks, so hopefully it's not that subject.
This is on the same top points, what I heard from the Brandon. So I just thought of share some words, not the budget related.
Okay, so your name and your address. And you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Subha Reddy, 113 Elm Heaven Way, from the Vexford community. Thank you for giving this opportunity. So I have one ask. Can you please consider to allocate some budget for the smart city application integration with the MPD Community Watch Program, where they touch the point, public safety tools, that is one of the best place, what I think, if you can allocate some budget and to improve that smart city application to integrate with the Morrisville Police Department Community Watch Program, so that that will help the communities also to better integrate with the Morrisville Police Department, because there is a lot of stories, not only story, it's a real-time incidents happening in the Kids Creek, Providence, and surrounding area. There is burglaries, so this will help us to better integrate. And the next one is for the Economic Development Committee, so development program, if town can think of setting up the committee like how we have for the public safety and smart city committees like that, Economic Development Committee setup will really empower to think about the grassroots level, how we can help the small-scale businesses, and that will pay back to our funding also. And another one is for the AA generative support, town has the various organizations, right, SaaS, Microsoft, IBM, Oracle, they are very much interested to help with the discounted infrastructure because I've been actively involved in the IBM for the AA tool, generative tools. They, we can really explore, they are ready to help in the AA stuff, so for economic cost-effective solutions. So another one is talent, talent-related. Please provide us some opportunity for the Morrisville family kids as interns or part-time jobs, so that that will help, again, budget area where you can have the low-cost, or I would say, better talented pool to help the town in the economic development, or the smart city applications development, or the administration area. So I request again, please facilitate some slots for the interns and part-time jobs for the Morrisville kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Appreciate that. Right now, we're at Item 10, Public Hearings. Tonight, we have one public hearing on a proposed UDO text amendments. We invite Planning Manager Elliot Ward to come forward to facilitate the item. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Elliot Ward, Planning Manager. This evening, I'll be presenting Item 2024-46-0. These are proposed UDO text amendments related to masonry painting, tobacco and hemp sales, government accessory buildings, architectural exemptions, and stormwater management. Here is a brief overview, excuse me, sorry, a brief overview of the proposed amendments we'll be covering in the presentation. There is quite a bit of material in here, so I was going to pause after each section and ask for questions. Okay, we're going to start with amendments related to tobacco and hemp sale, product retail sales. Okay, we're going to start with amendments related to tobacco and hemp sale, product retail sales. Okay, staff proposes an amendment to the principal use table 4.2.4. This to include tobacco and/or hemp as a principal permitted use in the following zoning districts. Neighborhood Activity Center, Business Activity Center, Community Activity Center, Regional Activity Center, Corridor Commercial, Office Institutional, and Industrial Management. This request is to align with language adopted by Wake County, applying minimum distance requirements for tobacco and hemp retailers from schools and daycares to help reduce youth availability to those products. And just for the record, we were talking about specifically retailers that focus specifically on tobacco and hemp as sales. So convenience stores and other retailers would not be included in this definition. This is a snapshot of the research staff did on surrounding communities that have adopted similar language. You can see these jurisdictions not only established minimum distances from schools, but they also establish distance requirements from other tobacco and hemp retailers. Staff mapped 500 foot and 1,000 foot buffers around the Morrisville Public and Private Schools and Daycares. Kind of to determine the impact on future tobacco and hemp retailers. We're trying to decipher whether or not by creating these buffers are we recreating hardship and not allowing them to exist anywhere in town. The third map is an overlay of the two, so you can kind of get comparison between the 500 and the 1,000. At the Planning and Zoning Board's request, staff also mapped 1,000 foot buffers around places of worship and parks. As you can see here, the second map also includes greenways, which which were asked about as well. As you can see, the one with greenways does become a little bit convoluted when you when you buffer all of it. So after all that research and the mapping and discussions with staff. Staff recommends the following language be added to the use specific standards for the tobacco and/or hemp proposed use. The site of the establishment must be located at least 1,000 feet as measured in a straight line from property line to property line. For any public or private elementary school, middle school, high school, daycare facility, public park or recreation facility, or place of worship. The site of the establishment must be located at least 1,000 feet as measured in a straight line from property line to property line. From the site of any other tobacco and/or hemp retail establishment that exists or has been permitted. Staff also proposes adding the following definition for the tobacco and/or hemp use to UDO section 11.5. Building, property, or activity, the principal use or purpose of which is the sale of any product that contains tobacco, nicotine, and/or any amount of THC. This use includes, but is not limited to cigarettes, cigars, electronic cigarettes, electronic juice, other vaping products, Delta eight, Delta nine, other THC products. And that is all I have for that first section, so I'll pause here for any questions.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretam Garamella, followed by council member Fender, followed by council member Johnson.
Regarding this, Elliot, my question is, UDO is more about, you know, new structures, right? Like how, like my, for example, there's already a retailer. Like say, the Hattie State Complex where the seniors, senior citizens thing is there. It's, how do you enforce it? Because technically, it's a rental that they will rent from the rental facility, like, you know, from the, from whoever the renter is. Then how is town involved in it? Because we are not, they're not asking for a permit, especially like, you know, like, I, the fire department might be involved in some form or shape. But other than that, it's just a facility, they're doing it. And I'm just curious how you are going to put, you know, teeth into this, you know? Because there is nothing stopping or unless we have a process where these guys rent, you can stop the usage. I have not seen that.
Right, so if I'm hearing your question correctly, if a new, say hemp retailer wants to move into a space. How is the town able to actually enforce the buffer requirement, say yes or no, this is okay?
Yeah, not even town, like suppose a retailer, like I am the owner of a shopping complex. Okay, and say you as a retailer wants to have it in my shopping complex. And I will work out the lease and then it's okay and I will sign it and you're in. Who is going to stop the transaction between the owner and the tenant?
So I think, and maybe Michelle can also assist if you think of anything else, Michelle. But I think right now, our our form of enforcement relates primarily to our inspections process through the building permit. So if a tenant comes in for one of those retail spaces, submits an outfit, a permit for the space, wants to garner towards their business. Which is going to require some some work on the inside.
But what if he's not like, you know, most of the hemp places are just like a box, you know? All they do is set their racks up and do it, there's no special fitting, there's nothing really needed, there is no plumbing needed, so it's just.
Right, so if they, if they did in that case, and they didn't go through any kind of proper channels. Then we would be able to apply some some sort of code enforcement procedure to, you know. It sounds like if it's just a box on the side of the road, obviously that is that is code enforcement. We could, I mean, as far as the spaces go, I think our primary, I think that's the main issue is retail spaces, tenant spaces. Because obviously, if it's just someone setting up something on the side of the road, that's enforceable. But the other, the other way to enforce it is probably through our building permit process. And if they come in for a permit for an outfit and we, they have to provide the use, we can say, well, look, I mean, that's the first thing the planning is going to look at. Where is it located? Is it within one of these buffer zones? It's a yes or no, they can't move into that space. Now, I think after adding this to UDO, adding some sort of, you know, information to the website. Something to get the word out for people who own shopping centers, you know, retailers in the future, so that they are aware that this rule is now in effect.
So that's, that's the thing, because I'm more worried, Frank, from a legal point of view, like if the, the person who owns a shopping complex has already signed a 10 year lease and money is involved, and then the code enforcement comes in. He'll say, I did not know anything, who is going to pay for my damages now?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, once this is in place and in effect, it would be stopped well before you get to that point. So before anyone's got a business set up, a sign up, and they're good to go. Getting the word out is going to, and hopefully prevent contracts from being signed.
Yes, that's, that's the reason I was asking, because most of these shops don't have, don't need any outfits. You know, other than like I sign on the top. So they may just come in, walk in, do it, and then.
Yeah, I mean, I think, hopefully, primarily, a lot of times, planning department will receive that call and say, is this use permitted in this zoning district? I mean, and I think if it's, you know, if it's a reputable shopping center, that they would, they would check before they bring into a new use into the space. And they definitely would have to if they go through the building permit process correctly and, you know, make any changes, so.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it's not perfect, but having this in place, I think, is a step one, and then, you know, figure out enforcement as we go.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by councilmember Johnson, please.
So I have a couple of questions on definitions. Does, well, when you talk about schools and daycares, would that include day camps? Like a lot of the, like Discovery Zone, a lot of the facilities we have in this area that are provided for. That are used as daycares for kids that are on track out, track out camps or summer schools. Would this include those types of facilities?
Yeah, so this is, that's a great question, because the point that I, I'd like to make is, I mean, obviously, this is as we sit today. So if, and this is exactly what you're, what you're asking, but as we move forward with more summer camps, things like that. If they fit the definition of any of the schools, the way UDO defines any of the schools or daycare use, then they would be added to this list.
What list? Which one are you talking about?
Added to these buffers, sorry. So then all of a sudden, you've got a new, a new use, we could buffer that 1,000 feet. Now, that's not going to prevent an existing temp tobacco or hemp, but anything that comes in after that daycare or school is set up would then be prevented.
So did you, so is the answer yes, that those types of, track out camps would be included in this definition of daycares and schools?
So as long as they, the camp or, you know, whatever it is, meets the definition of daycare in the UDO. So that, that's what's being, according to this proposed language, right? So these are the uses that they would have to be buffered from. So whatever it is, has to meet that daycare facility or public school or recreation facility. You know, it would have to meet those definitions and be considered that use type now.
Well, what, so then what is the definition?
Yep, we can bring up the UDO.
I mean, most of those track out camps will have elementary age, elementary school aged children. Really? I mean, the whole reason why those kids are there is because they need supervision.
Yeah, I mean, so, okay, so. Daycare center definition is a building or structure and associated outdoor area where care, protection, and supervision are provided for a fee on a regular schedule, at least twice a week to more than six children or aging adults at one time. So falling under that category, what you're describing, sounds like it would fit, but again, it just depends on the specifics.
Okay. The reason why, and so, okay, well, let's, so then the, so for example, the hemp vaping business that is located in Grace Park, if it's still there, by Starbucks. Is, so then is it grandfathered in?
It is, so kind of aligning with the Wake, Wake County language, it's any that are existing or have already been granted a permit, building permit. Maybe they haven't been constructed or moved in yet, they would be grandfathered in. And they will be allowed to continue to exist, but if they were to vacate that space and that space, and a new use could come in, a similar use. As long as within, but if it's with over 180 days has passed, then they could no longer have any tobacco or hemp retailer in that space moving forward.
Okay. Okay, that part's unfortunate. Okay, so then the other question I had regarding definitions, because it's a little, and, what's the word? Ambiguous, ambiguous. It says hemp, and then you also say any amount of THC. So does hemp include CBD product?
If it, if it, if the CBD has hemp in it, then it would fit under that, oh, let me move that up, sorry.
CBD is hemp?
Yeah, so any traces of THC in a product would count under this definition.
Any trace of, say that again?
So any trace of THC in the product under this definition would count as the hemp store. So that was, that was a conversation that took place with Planning and Zoning Board. The original, original language aligned specifically with Wake County, which was a certain amount of THC. The PZB felt that was a bit vague, and they wanted to classify it as any amount of THC. That way, there's no, you don't have to fluctuate in percentages, it's just there, if it's got THC in it, then it counts as that product. So CBD would fall under that.
If it had THC?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, they do make some CBD without THC, but I believe CBD is still, with no THC, is still considered hemp.
Right, so, yeah, I think that's why Wake County and some other surrounding areas didn't put the word hemp in there specifically. Because there are certain products that would not, wouldn't fall under this, these types of categories that are hemp related.
This is confusing, the way you have it written.
Yeah, so we could change it, I mean, if you think it's confusing, obviously you could change it to tobacco and/or THC. But yeah, there are hemp products out there that, you know, would not be classified as a, you know, using product.
I mean, me, well, yeah, it's, it's ambiguous. I mean, I can fully understand why you would not want kids using THC or Delta eight or tobacco. And, but I know from my personal experience, CBD is not necessarily dangerous for kids. Yet Delta eight is, and that's a hemp product, but there are some hemp products that have no THC that most people consider safe, but the way this is written is ambiguous.
Okay.
But certainly, I am no expert.
No, I'm just trying to take all your, take all these notes here. So it sounds like you're saying maybe more specificity in the definition itself.
Yeah, I think what you have written under, like the detail that is in, under your heading, tobacco and/or hemp is good. But I think someone smarter than me with more authority in this area may want to have a better suggestion of what you would want to label this, tobacco and/or THC maybe.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly go back and discuss that, re-review it and see. Maybe go outside of just Wake County Triangle area, see if there's other examples of definitions wording.
Are you seeing Wake County and their verbiage, do they use tobacco and/or hemp?
They do, yeah, so the and/or, I think their, their definition is tobacco and hemp. I, I felt that that was a little, that could be a little iffy when you're combining the two, so it needs to be and/or, so it could be one or the other. So that's the only difference, really. Most of this language, and similar with the other municipalities that I was showing earlier, they all kind of adopted the same language. The differences really were just whether they did the uses that they did and the distance. So pretty much everyone adopted the similar language.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure what I did to PowerPoint.
Did you have anything else, councilmember Fender, at this time?
No, I just think there's some further research maybe needed there.
Okay, sounds good. With your permission, councilmember Johnson, can I recognize the town manager who might have something to add at this point?
Okay, because you were next. Elliot covered, I was just going to say, I think we can.
I think Elliot covered. I was just gonna say, I think we can take a look at some definitions that might better explain what's in that, uh, def, well, definitions to better support the definition, but, um, we'll circle back and we can talk through that, make sure that, um, it's a little clearer when we come back to twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati.
Um, so thank you, Elliot. Uh, just good presentation so far. We let you get through the rest of it, but, um, I'm sure we're gonna have even more questions. I also just wanted to clarify, uh, the definitions of the, um, you know, in, in that line one there. When you talk about recreation facilities, and I think I know the answer to this because you start off by saying in public or private and then you list all these. So even like the Wake Competition Center would fall into this category? Is that considered a recreation facility?
So public recreation facilities, yeah.
Oh, it's only public?
Yeah. So, uh, and maybe we can make that a little more clear too, because it's public park or recreation facility, as in public applies to both.
Okay, because I would want to include the Wake Competition Center, quite frankly.
Yeah, I think kind of what you're alluding to is also private recreation facilities where kids could congregate.
Where children, yes, yeah, yeah. Because that, I, I, that is just, uh, ripe with children in there all the time. And they're young, you know, middle school, high school, elementary school, you know, every age.
Yeah, we'll take, we can take a look at other uses, um. I'm, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, but private recreation facilities, facility is the first one that comes to mind, but there, I know there are other ones that could also perhaps fit into kind of what you're thinking, the line you're going down. Um, we, we were, we were trying to be cognizant though too of also looking at those buffer tables with only our ten square miles. Eventually it could become a hardship. We're not allowing this use to come in at all and we're preventing them. So that's the other thing we'll, we'll look at and we'll map it and see adding more uses, what that takes away as far as space and so forth.
Thank, thank you for mentioning that, and you're right, that is a balance you have to, um, be really careful of. I get that too, so, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
I'm clearly very outnumbered on this, but I've got to be honest with you. This feels so performative to me, like, like, I don't, I don't understand the scenario, honestly, that we're trying to, to prevent here. These businesses are tightly regulated. They can't sell to minors. They, I, I don't, are, it like is our scenario that like, kids are gonna sneak away from the Wake Competition Center and buy vapes? I, I just don't, I, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna end up doing this. I, all the other municipalities have done it, but I just think it's nonsense. I'm sorry, I, I, I don't think that the, that the presence of a business. I mean, we have, we have liquor stores, we have, Harris Teeter sells wine and beer. I mean, I don't think that the presence of a business that sells a substance that we don't want our kids to use is what's gonna make our kids use it. I, you know, I, it's, it's not like, I mean, you know, if we're all gonna vote for it, obviously I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it too, but I just, it's not like, if, if this was a strip club, I would have a different opinion because that's a business that you're talking about that attracts, that attracts an element of people that you don't want around kids and it attracts drugs and it attracts, you know, there's, there are very, very good reasons not to put strip clubs near schools, but this is, I mean, I just don't see that this is that same kind of situation. I, you know.
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's fair. And there, there was some, um, language that Wake County put out a little bit, um, to coincide with what they were adopting. I, I think their thinking was just a visibility thing primarily, um, the more visible it is, the more tempting it is for children. I think that was their justification for what, for passing this.
Right, and, and I, and I get that, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that, like, kids are going to see the building no matter where in town it is. And, I mean, the, as long as we're doing our job and preventing the businesses from selling to them, that, I mean, most kids that, that are underage that are getting vapes are not buying them at one of these stores. You know, I, I mean, they're, they're getting from them, from their older brother or, you know, their cool friend whose mom buys them for them or something like that. I, I just, I think that this is like a solution in search of a problem, is my opinion. That's my opinion. I, I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm just saying that I just feel like it has to be said and, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, um, I always like hearing your perspective, um, because it is different than mine, but I, I get it from a logical standpoint. I've, I've never, oh, anyway, um, so you mentioned hardship. Uh, we have legislative authority to do up to a certain amount. It sounds like if it becomes a hardship in someone's opinion, then we lose the ability or certain things will be struck down. That being said, I didn't have a problem with the one that showed also greenways. So I'd be willing to support something that really limits, um, getting to the definitions. It seemed to me like, under that definition, if we combine those two and not separate them, so it'd be tobacco and/or hemp and/or vaping products and just lump all vaping products in there too, if we can, that kind of covers all our bases. We don't have to get into any details. If it's a vaping product, it's not allowed because people are gonna, are trying to sneak in anyway. If you buy a vape here and you get your CBD in the next town over, you're still getting the bad stuff in general. So those are just my first thoughts on what we're talking about right now. Um, did anyone else want to speak that didn't have a chance to yet on this one? We're gonna do a second round. Uh, Councilmember Garam, uh, Mayor Pretend Garamilla.
Couple of questions, um, going back on the greenways, I think greenways is a workkill because in theory, yes, no tobacco on greenway is fine, but if you're putting a thousand feet buffer from the tip of every greenway, that's pretty much, we have greenways crossing the entire town. So that's almost, we'll get a lot of pushback, uh, for hardships, you know, it depends on where the greenway is. Like, that's, uh, I think not fair, like, not that I've supported, but it's not fair for the business who's trying to put, because now the, again, I go back to the business owner, he does not know where the nearest greenway is. And, you know, like, is it thousand feet, it is nine hundred feet and all kinds of things, you know, like, your schools and all those things are landmarks, you can understand, you know, it makes sense. But when you're using a greenway, it's, it's a slippery slope, I feel, especially putting a thousand feet buffer across every greenway. That's pretty much hard.
Yeah, so I think that, that was part of our thinking too, um, not necessarily just of what you're seeing here on the map, but, you know, we're, we're really pushing for additional greenway connection throughout the town and just continually adding. And you already mentioned, you know, difficulties with enforcement. When you add something, you know, as, you know, the buffers as much as the greenways, that, that could become much more difficult. So I think that was just kind of staff's thinking.
And, and the other question I had is when they legalize marijuana, say, in a couple of years, all this is voided?
I think it would have to be revisited, yeah.
So, okay, and then the other last question I have is, this thousand feet buffer, suppose there is a daycare at the, at the boundary of our jurisdiction and there is a hundred feet away in our neighboring town or Durham side that it is there. So how does that work?
Sorry, so if, if there's a, uh,
Suppose there's a, suppose there's a, like, say, for example, Northwest Park, right? It's almost at the tip of RTP, right? If someone at RTP, so the distance between RTP and Northwest Park is like, say, four hundred feet and we have a thousand feet buffer that nothing is there. So technically, they're having, with that new jurisdiction to the border of Morrisville. So is there a enforcement there or basically outside our jurisdiction, you know, there's nothing we can do?
Yeah, I mean.
Because we, we cross Cary, we cross, uh, you know, RTP and Durham, all kinds of places we do.
Yeah, I think ideally that other jurisdiction would also adopt similar language, but at this point, we could only enforce, yeah, what, what's in our corporate limits.
Yeah, exactly. So, so that was a thought process because how much ever you try, it could be on either side.
Yeah, and I, I, going back to, again, it's not, it's not a perfect solution. Obviously, there are those situations, you could be right on the edge of Cary or Durham and someone sets one up right there, um, but, you know, I think having this language, Wake County's thought was it's a start, you know.
As was noted, there's a number of existing shops, so the grandfathering is gonna happen in any case. So. I think we're ready to go through the rest of the presentation and we still need to open the public hearing and hear from anybody, um, so it's.
Okay.
I think we're good on this section.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure what happened to the PowerPoint, but I don't know what I did. It's my fault, sorry. All right, um. So, uh, next is, uh, masonry paintings are proposed changes to U D O sections five point nine and five point sixteen. Staff began looking into, uh, painted masonry after receiving requests from different business owners of varying sized, uh, businesses, uh, as well as noticing that a couple of large office parks had painted concrete masonry unit exteriors already. Uh, so again, community research, um, you can see all but one of the communities, oh, sorry. All but one of the communities, uh, studied permitted masonry to be painted. Um, three of the communities, Durham, Raleigh and Wake Forest, had zoning district restrictions and about half the municipalities had restrictions on color and paint styles. Um, so, uh, based on the research, staff proposes allowing brick and concrete masonry units to be painted in all zoning districts except the historic Crossroads Village. Uh, we are recommending that stone, rock and tile materials, uh, not be paint, not, I mean, continue to not be permitted to be painted, sorry. And if you need me to go back to any slides, I'd be happy to, when I get through. Staff also proposes the following language to be added to section five point nine point four point C, point one, B one, uh, applying color restrictions across the board for all facade materials. Um, facade colors including permitted painted masonry shall be of low reflectance earth tone, muted, subtle or neutral colors. When part of a common development building shall utilize colors that are consistent with or complement surrounding development, uh, it should, it shall be the responsibility of the property owner to maintain a painted facade and, uh, keep it in good condition to prevent a public nuisance. So this is, um, attempting to prevent neon coloring, you know, anything bright. It's pretty common language across those, those other municipalities. And then for, uh, section five point sixteen, um, staff proposes adding the following language to five sixteen point two, point D, point eighteen. Uh, it will prohibit signs from being painted directly onto a building or structure. Um, this restriction will not apply to murals, which are permitted under section four point three point five point B, point eighteen, and they have a separate definition in section eleven point five. And, uh, that's it for that section. So if you have any questions or'd like me to return any slides, we have to.
Uh, Councilmember Fender, please.
Just one quick question. What's an example of tile as a?
Example of tile?
Yeah, as a material on the exterior?
I mean, it's not very common, but it is listed under our exterior, allowed exterior facade materials. So we excluded that and the stone or rock.
Okay. Do we have any? Okay, all right.
Okay, next section.
Bring up, uh, Director Svenoli for the next two sections.
He can call me Mark next time. Thank you, Elliot. Uh, thanks again. Good evening, Mayor, council members. For the record, Mark Svenoli, Director of Engineering. I thought I'd take this section just because it pertains to our, uh, upcoming Public Works Facility project. Uh, so let's, let's dive right in. So the following U D O text amendments pertain to government accessory buildings and specifically speaks to proposed exemptions. I'd like to point out that this would only pertain to buildings that the town develops. This would not, uh, be buildings or structures that a private developer would do. And it's under the government maintenance, storage or distribution facility use classification, and it's basically directly pointing towards our public works facility. I also want to emphasize that this does not pertain to the primary structure that we are proposing. Uh, the primary structure would comply to U D O, uh, requirements for aesthetics and other, other things. The main facility will meet the architectural guidelines and standards and will be the primary structure that faces aviation once developed. And just to put it into like a visual context, this is a site plan of the proposed, uh, facility. On the top part of the slide is, uh, aviation, just to kind of give you reference. Uh, we pointed out the proposed public works building and the accessory buildings that, that the U D O text amendments pertain to are the ones with the, uh, blue highlighted, uh, um, text notes. So you have a, a storage area, truck wash, assault, uh, sand storage building and then a three-sided shed maintenance yard. These are the ones being proposed as part of the project that, that would meet, uh, that would be part of this, uh, U D O text amendment. Uh, for the most part, these accessory structures will not be in view from aviation and access to these areas is restricted to town staff only. Uh, these buildings are not for public use. They're, they're intended to support the operations and maintenance of, of public works and it's impractical for them to meet the architectural standards by the way they're used on a daily basis. And just to dive right into the actual sections, uh, under section four point two, what we're proposing is, uh, government maintenance, storage or distribution facilities and administrative government services, service use shall not be subject to the accessory use and structure standards in section four point three point three point eight point four. And also under five point nine, the standards in, in this section shall not apply to accessory buildings and structures associated with government maintenance, storage or distribution facility and administrative government services, service uses. And, uh, just for the record, these amendments were approved by Planning and Zoning Board. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. I think Ben Mills will take the next section for Stormwater.
Good evening, Ben Mills of Stormwater. All right. Uh, this was pretty straightforward due to a recent, uh, session law that was passed, um, outlawing, uh, SEM security maintenance, maintenance payments. Um, we have, we're proposing edits to get rid of that language in our U D O, uh, to comply with the session law. Um, so the town will not be able to collect these payments any, any longer. Payments are a little bit different than, um, bonds, just to point that out. So all the bond language is still gonna be kept for Stormwater. But all the edits are shown on the screen. Happy to answer any questions related to that too as well.
Does the new law put us at risk of like losing revenues in a significant manner?
Most of the funds were restricted, uh, that we collected from that, um, to, you know, repair any private SEMs if it came down to it, if the property owner wasn't able to do it. Um, so going forward, we still have a, I'd say, nice chunk of reserves for that currently, so, um, it'll be a little adjustment, but most of the, we haven't used those funds in a long time, so not any immediate risk, no.
Okay, so if it gets to be a problem, we could change our E R U rate.
We could, we could, yep.
Mr. Director Svenoli, do you have something to add?
If I could just add, so tho, those, uh, revenues that we, that we collect, um, I don't know if it even, there could be categorized as revenues, it's, it's a holding account. Uh, in the event that, that, uh, an SEM that was supposed to be maintained by a private development or an HOA wasn't maintained to our standard, and even after enforcement action, they didn't do anything about it, then we would come and use that money for that. We don't use that money, actually, actually can't use that money for any other purposes, like for projects or anything like that, specifically, uh, for the maintenance of those SEMs. And in, in the event, actually, if I'm not mistaken with the legislation, um, prior developments can come and ask for a refund of the funds. So it's not a revenue source that we use for projects. It just sits in a holding account in the event that we would have to use it to maintain an S E M that was built by a private development. Without that revenue coming in, what we would do is we would take additional enforcement action against somebody who was in violation of maintaining the S E M. I mean, I think our track record, most, I would say 99% of people that we have issued violations, we always correct the situation.
Yep. I'll go as 100% since I've been here.
I appreciate you guys bringing this forward and making sure that we're in compliance. Thank you.
All right, so obviously, staff recommends approval of proposed U D O text amendments with or without changes. At the April 4th, 2024 meeting, the P Z B voted unanimously to for a recommendation of approval on the proposed text amendments to the town council. Council is asked to open a public hearing this evening, and action is slated for the following meeting on the 28th. And these are the potential options, approve with changes or deny the proposed U D O amendments. And here is your ordinance language currently. And that's all I have. If you have any other follow-up questions for the three of us, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions before I open the hearing? Okay, I declare the hearing open. Do we have anyone signed up, or have we received any emails or anything? Okay. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing if that's the will of the council. Okay. I have, okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Rao to close the public hearing.
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Johnson. Although in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye. Aye, and opposed. Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Does anyone have any more questions before they bring this back in two weeks? Because I'm going to ask him to. Can you tell us what you heard about the tobacco and hemp and what changes you may bring forth so that we're all on the same page?
Yes, certainly. So it sounds like we will be coming back, doing a little more research on the definition itself. Looking into C B D, more clear language on the T H C, adding private recreation facilities, other uses that kids could play at. Trying to go through my notes right now, I apologize. Adding potentially all vaping products to cover all bases, as you mentioned, Mayor. Combining the definitions, looking into that as well, and I think that's all I had written down for what we need to come back with. Did I miss anything?
Did anyone have anything else, Town Manager?
Mayor, if I may, we heard one person speak for the inclusion of greenways 1,000 feet, and I think we heard one other speak not in favor of that. I think we could use a little guidance on whether that expectation is to bring it back or not.
I think the expectation is to not bring that one back. That one's a little bit too broad is what I kind of interpret. I just wanted to put it out there to see if there was interest in.
And we, and I will come back with some more specifics about enforcement as well, some more information.
Yeah, I'm surprised that we don't, we can't just go in and say this is not a permitted use, cease doing business. Is that not within our authority? It is not. Okay, so there has to be some kind of trigger.
Yes, sir. What I was going to say is it's legitimate business, so as Elliot said, it needs to be provided for somewhere in the zoning jurisdiction.
Right, but if they want to just go into a jurisdiction that we are saying they can't, I mean, a zoning area that we're saying that they can't because it's within like so many feet, if they're just opening a door and selling out of boxes and they don't have any, they will be able to do that, is what.
You could certainly restrict it.
Right, okay.
But it has to be allowed somewhere under some circumstances.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think if they, if they just went in without talking to the town in any way, then they would be considered non-conforming use, in which case then we could step in with enforcement.
Okay, and so when you look at the maps, the ones that are just 1,000 feet from what was presented, that allows enough for them that you don't think we'd be at risk?
Yes, sir, I agree.
Also, I think, which I really liked was putting to all the property owners, like this is a new enforcement, so be, you know, be mindful of it before you rent it off. Because I don't, my, my thing where I don't like is it will be bad publicity for Morrisville. Not if suppose a business comes in and the rent, like the owner rents it off, and it didn't go well, and we basically as a town said, no, you can't have it. Someone is losing money there. So they will leave the town in bad taste. So that's not good for any one of us because he'll go in bad mouth everywhere. So.
Yeah, we could also reach out to communications as well as the chamber, try and get the word out.
Councilmember Abadi, please.
Just out of curiosity, how many shopping centers do we have that are within 1,000 feet of a school? Like when you mapped out on that slide where you mapped out all the 1,000 feet borders, how many shopping centers were actually in that, those radii?
Yeah, I don't have a specific number for you. I do, I mean, fortunately, it's been a while since I did the original research, I apologize. But I would say originally, my, my recommendation, my opinion originally was 500 feet, just because it did seem like, once you implement this, there, it was, there was a potential of a corner of a buffer touching a corner of a shopping center, just because there are enough between McCrimmon Corners, Grace Park. But then after we discussed more with P Z B, you know, the available space kind of to the east and northeast of the town, the availability of, you know, commercial space there was pretty prevalent, so we felt like 1,000 feet would be okay.
There, there's a preschool right there by Harris Teeter Shopping Center, that Goddard place. And there's a preschool right there by Grace Park where there's already a vape store. There's already a vape store at Harris Teeter.
Yeah, so those are the grandfathered ones that.
Yeah.
If they stay in existence and don't have a 180-day vacancy.
They wouldn't be allowed with this.
Yeah, so they, those would be grandfathered in, but again, yeah, 180-day vacancy, then another use would not be allowed moving forward. And I think also that's some of what Wake County was seeing too, is just the amount that were popping up that they thought they needed to do something.
Get in front of it. Okay. Scheduled to take action on this in two weeks. Appreciate the whole team coming together and giving us the answers to make a good informed decision. We are now at item 11, new items. We have one new item for briefing. Planning Director Michelle Stiegel will come forward to facilitate the briefing on a public art acceptance policy.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to be presenting item 2024-173, which is a proposed public art acceptance policy. The town has been approached about the potential donation of public art. So in order to facilitate the review of that request and any future request, a public art acceptance policy has been drafted for your consideration. The purpose of the policy is to establish a process and criteria for review of requests for the donation of public art to the town to provide transparency and equity in the themes and messages of artwork. And the policy does also include a definition of public art with, which mirrors the language in the U D O. And also did want to note that public art would be inclusive of murals. This is not a public art policy, but a public art acceptance policy. If the town were ever to develop a more broad public art program, we could look at establishing a public art policy for the town at that time. Some of the criteria and considerations for public art that are in the policy include that the artwork contributes to and enhances the town's public art collection, that the artwork supports the cultural, economic, and social framework of the community, the artwork meets a high standard of quality, the relationship of the proposed artwork to the site, if there will be convenient, accessible public access, if the artists have completed works of comparable scale. Going on to the next slide, there are a few more. If any utility requirements to appropriately display and maintain the artwork can be met, environmental impact and sustainability, prevention of unsafe conditions, long-term durability against theft, vandalism, weathering, and the cost of maintenance and other expenses to the town. I will note that in developing the policy, we did look at a number of policies in other communities, both inside and outside North Carolina. Brevard, North Carolina, was probably the one we took the closest look at. Also looked at Burlington, but ultimately borrowed from a lot of the themes in those policies and crafted something specific to Morrisville. In terms of prohibited themes and messages, the policy does propose that hate speech or any forms of intimidation would be prohibited, public art to display deities, the denigration of a particular race, creed, color, religion, point of national origin or ethnic group, political leaders who have held office in the prior 25 years or have been deceased for 25 years or less, and depictions of our messages promoting parties or individuals who have served in active sedition or treason against the government. The policy does also propose a process for the review of any request for public art donation to the town. That process would include an application to town staff. We would then work with the applicant on some of the details, make a recommendation to council. Town council would review, and then a contract would be executed. When we brought forward a recommendation to town council, the plan would be to at least bullet point those contract provisions, so council would have a good understanding of costs related to transportation, maintenance, other responsibilities, and then allow the attorney's office to put the legalese around that. That contract, the items that are to be included in the contract are laid out in the policy. They relate to the dates of installation, method and cost of installation, project timeline, transportation costs and responsibility, maintenance cost and responsibility, insurance, library provisions, and ownership. And a lot of these are to be discussed and negotiated on a case-by-case basis. So briefing the item tonight, but this item is then scheduled for action, if you're comfortable doing so, at the May 28th meeting. And with that, I will take any questions.
I just have one question. What is the definition of a deity? Like, I was just thinking of like a Roman god, Zeus. Is that a fictional character or a deity?
That's a good question. That's probably what I would call Frank. May I be a subject to a little interpretation? I would say probably a deity. But ultimately, you know, anything that is proposed, we would bring before you, and you could make that determination.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we're scheduled to take action on this on the 28th. Thank you very much for all the background work.
Sure.
Sure a lot went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're at item 12, action items. We have one action item, to adopt a resolution on the Morrisville sponsorship policy and facility naming rights policy. Communications Director Will Glenn will facilitate this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Will Glenn, Communications Director, glad to be before you this evening. I am here, I came before you on March 26th for a brief, back tonight, for action item. When I came before you on March 26th, you asked that we go before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and present the policies, and that was done on April 24th. Had a good conversation with them. Policies were well received, no changes suggested at that time to either policy. Language addressing signage for unique occasions was added also to page five, sponsorship policy, to address signage or material requested for display by outside entities. If you've driven downtown Hall Drive this month, you've seen the Hurricanes banners posted there. This is to address items like that, and I'll go deeper down on next slide, actually. And also, you asked that we, I did a little more work on the naming rights policy, and specifically around residents having opportunities to sponsor items like bricks and benches and dugouts as an alternative to larger naming rights categories than the policy already. And that was addressed by adding a fundraising campaigns category to page four. This slide here, sorry for all the words, but I just went in depth about the criteria for having those signs displayed in town. And one of the main things was it needs to be a community asset or social resource. Examples being community organizations, cultural organizations, faith-based, schools, hospitals, businesses, and in this case, professional sports team, the Hurricanes. Do want to mention that the town manager or designee will determine eligibility on a case-by-case basis for these items. And it's important to outline, there should be no cost of the town, and that includes having the requestee pay for the cost that it cost us to have these put up and taken down. So this next slide just shows the fundraising campaigns that I mentioned being slotted in here as a category for naming rights. And I broke that out here to show you the branding and advertising opportunities that would be included there, including benches, bike racks, bricks and pavers, dugouts, shelters and shade structures, kiosks, playgrounds, and I want to mention other items can be added on a case-by-case basis, but these were things that were mentioned by you last time. So that I have, I'll pause for any questions or if you want to take action.
Councilmember Spronning Johnson, please, followed by Councilmember Abadi.
Thank you. I really do like what you did with the fundraising campaign section because that gives us a lot of flexibility to have, you know, private donors as well as corporate donors. Like benches would be a private individual, maybe sponsoring a bench along a greenway. And, you know, there might be companies that want to sponsor some of the sport, you know, areas and so forth like that. So it's, it's nice that it's a mix. And I think it's a good start, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Abadi, please.
Sorry, I didn't have my, I didn't have my mic on. I said that it might also be good to specifically call out fencing around athletic fields and scoreboards. Both are usually pretty. Both are usually pretty good for fundraising dollars.
All right, noted.
It reminds me of Parkside Elementary, they have some stuff on their fencing by their front carpool area. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, do you have more, or?
No.
Okay. Okay. If there's no other questions, then we're all, please, Councilmember Johnson, please.
So Will, remind me, obviously in support of this policy, and thank you for bringing it to Parks and Rec and allowing them to have the opportunity to weigh in because this affects a lot of, a lot of the work that they do as well. But I know we talked about this a little bit, but tell me, what, are we going to have an implementation plan then, following this? What are we doing next steps then?
Next step will be deciding on things you want to have for naming rights, for example. We mentioned having a meeting here, as far as a work session, to discuss opportunities there, as far as naming rights. But things like Dog Park, we can do an RFP for that and put it out and start to bid on those things. So I think next step is advertising that is available, put it on the website and get it in different places, and those kinds of things.
Okay, and outreach as well? Because I just recently became aware Wegmans sponsored an area of a park up in Wake Forest. So, I mean, Wegmans, I know, I know not technically. It really is in the town of Cary, but everybody thinks it's in Morrisville. Have we all, well, not all, I shouldn't be saying, but a lot of us shop there. So Wegmans should be sponsoring something here in the town of Morrisville. So I think that proactive outreach has to happen as well, not just the, here's a meeting, come to us. I think we need to go to whoever, and, and...
Yeah. As I mentioned last time, we're definitely going to include proactive outreach.
Okay.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I would strongly suggest that we do some proactive outreach to a certain power utility that twisted our arm about cutting down lots of trees in a certain neighborhood off of Morrisville Carpenter Road. And highly suggest that they could sponsor a Crabtree Creek Nature Park.
I love the way you think. I do not say it often enough.
I just, I'm going to keep singing that tune until I see it in fruition.
All right.
I think they, especially with the upcoming rate increase, I think they have some dollars available, so.
Preach.
Very possible.
Mayor Perotam Garamella?
Write that down in our meeting minutes, please.
Forward a copy.
That seemed, sounded like a closing.
I think the last line, Will, where you said the other proposed forms of branding basically powers catch-all based in there.
Exactly.
That's good, because I think last time I had asked about this, and I know how much lists work with a pan can, you have to go behind them. No one is coming without giving money. And I would strongly suggest that each one of us as a council have to be advocates in going and talking to several people. It's not just the town's responsibility or this campaign fundraising team's responsibility. It's each and every one of us. To go look for every opportunities we get is only going to help us. I'll be honest, after this is approved, I'm going behind, getting an electronic screen board from Wolfpack. What is it? No, what is it? Wolfspeed? Yeah, because I'm going right in behind that, because we need that, and they can do that.
All right. It's been noted, so I'll follow up with you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve, if we can bring that up on the screen. The language.
Just ma'am, I'm not sure we have that on a screen, but it would be a motion to approve.
A resolution adopting.
Resolution 2024-118, adopting the Morrisville sponsorship policy and facility naming rights policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Robati, second by Mayor Perotam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that carries unanimously. Let the sponsorship dollars start to flow.
No, we gotta go behind.
Yeah, they're not just going to flow.
I think that's more stat role.
It's everyone's.
We can hear from staff on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
They'll never say no for the dollars coming in.
Everybody is sick.
We are now at council and manager comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
I have no comments tonight.
The mayor also has no comments. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
So I actually have some comments tonight. I would like to express my condolences to a, one of our Morrisville residents and a resident of Kits Creek, Norm Koszewski. He was considered, when I first moved into Kits Creek, I was immediately told of him, that he was considered the mayor of Kits Creek. And he recently passed away from pancreatic cancer. And he was one of the first residents of Kits Creek. And him and his wife Betty came over and introduced themselves. They were one of the first people that I met when I first moved there. And they were about, around the same age as my mom and dad. And after my dad and then my mom passed away, I kind of considered them my adoptive parents. And Norm was such a happy-go-lucky guy, and they were always outside walking. At first with their two Pomeranians, and then just with their one Pomeranian. And he, he, when he found out I was running for town council the first time, he was my biggest cheerleader. And I just always enjoyed listening to his stories. And, and I am definitely going to miss him. And this last year was just sad. Watching his, his walks got fewer and fewer. And he, you know, he would still come out there from time to time, walking with his wife Betty. So I just want to extend my condolences to his, his wife Betty and his two kids, Helena and Howard. So he's, he's definitely going to be missed in Kits Creek. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to, this is just for, because we're all like family and colleagues, but I just want to say that Sonia graduated from Chapel Hill on last Sunday with a degree in journalism, and she'll be going to Nairobi for a fellowship selected by the Associated Press in August. So proud. And Ryan got into biomedical engineering school. So we're, you know, excited empty nesters, but just wanted to share that happy moment with my colleagues. Just, just two comments. Actually, three. The Smart City Conference was really great, and I just want to thank our tech team. Everybody in the region and country is talking about Morrisville and wants to talk to Rick Ralph, so, and our team. So I just can't thank them enough for what they're doing. Tomorrow is the AI Summit. I'm hosting a fireside chat with John Chambers. The event is sold out, but I've reserved some seats for my colleagues if you want to come. It will be aired on WPTF Radio Live on 680 AM or 98.5 FM, and streamed on my Facebook site and a couple of other places. But it's going to be a fascinating talk. I know Andrew Robati worked there when he was CEO of Cisco, and he's going to be talking about AI and innovation. And, and then the final thing is, everyone's excited about the Lufthansa flight. And I know that, you know, they're going to have an opening on June 6th, but I met some executives at the box yard a few weeks ago, and it's going to be really exciting. So I think Morrisville benefits a lot and with our relationship with the airport and doing what we can to keep, you know, getting more international flights. So that's all I have. And congratulations on your first budget, and you did a great job. And looking forward to a great year. Year's almost over, not much time left.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Perotam Garamella.
So congratulations to your daughter, it's really good. Of course, I was also celebrating a little bit of graduation. My son graduated from NC State with a master's degree in accounting, and his dream is to become an accountant. And hopefully, I know that's a rough journey, especially since we've been talking about budget this evening. He'll be enjoying that. But he, he's looking forward to being fully employed and taking on new challenges. And I think that this time of year is really energizing when you see the graduates and you see the hope and you see the future thinking. I think we should all reflect that. This is the class that was in college when the pandemic started. And so much of the world has changed. And these students persevered through a lot of isolation in trying to connect virtually, and then now, you know, face-to-face. So it has just been a real big journey for everyone, and it's, it's an amazing accomplishment. And also, our high school graduation season is upon us, and those students are also part of that generation where they were starting their high school days very much in isolation, and now they're able to get together and gather and so forth like that. And that's a very exciting season coming up, so looking forward to that. Thank you.
Mayor Perotam Garamella, please.
Yeah, I got a couple. I got to start with Pan Can, you know, the 5K that we did. It was really, really touching for me, you know. I have never been to a Pan Can, a 5K. Every person who came there had a purpose, and the emotions were so high. Usually I see 5K people are happy, jolly, running, but families coming together with the name of their loved ones at the back was really touching, you know. From the kids to their grandparents to their, like, spouse, or, you know. It was, it was really touching. So thanks for all that you do to organize that.
Thank you for being here.
And second, yesterday, you know, sorry, it was a day before Saturday, we had the Punjabi Mila in Church Street. And thanks to John, you know, who worked relentlessly to ensure. There was a lot of confusion, permits, back and forth. And he really pulled a permit on less than half a day. They had to redo the stage because the staff was very cognizant on anything happening to the, to the grounds because my next announcement will be about that. So they wanted to ensure the ground was really intact and not get spoiled. But all the efforts that the staff did, excellent job. And third one is, this has been almost going for like a month and a half to two months. Ever since Morrisville was not selected for World Cup Cricket, you know, we were continuously working to see at least we can get some practice games. So said that, kudos to Brandon and the staff working around the clock with Cricket USA. And this Thursday, we will be getting the Sri Lanka national team to Morrisville. They will be practicing for 10 days before they go to their World Cup and Dallas. So it's a great pride. They are the former World Cup winners for T20. And so, and I'm excited because they will be hitting their sixes and fours like a power play. So it will be a big enthusiasm for the kids to watch that kind of thing. So, good job, Brandon and Pauling, and so it was a very good effort on your part.
Thank you, that was very little of me and a lot of John and Mary and Jeffrey and Brian Ray, among others, doing that work, but thank you.
And last but not the least, everyone is saying, so, again, my son Wyvo, he's graduating from NCSSM. And it was unfortunate, like, ever since I used to go for all those high school graduations to Raleigh Convention Center, when he was at Anlo, I said, I will be there that day when he walks through it. So unfortunately, he moved from Anlo to NCSSM. So I lost that opportunity. And now, his graduation is on 25th, and he will be leaving to India. So I lost that opportunity too, because I will not be seeing his graduation. So his dean, yesterday, did a special thing. He called the entire faculty, and there was one more girl who was going for an international competition to Singapore. Along with Wyvo, they had a special graduation ceremony. And the reason Wyvo, he's, he's packing up everything and exams. He got selected for the Indian Idol, that's a replica of American Idol. So it has a viewership of almost like 750 million people. The next three months, he'll be there performing. So at some point after the stages, I'll be going there. But we are excited that he got selected among 20,000 people, 10 or 12 were selected. So it's excitement.
That's really cool. Good.
I also missed my chance to announce that Baby Grace Robati committed to NC State yesterday and will be attending there in the fall.
Yes.
Go Pack.
That's a great school.
And my, my son committed to UNC, he got a Chancellor Scholarship, so, so he's like...
All our kids are so great.
Okay, can I ask a clarifying question about the Sri Lanka Cricket? What, what time of those games? What are the dates again?
So, so...
And that's not clear. There's a Facebook post out there that is not clear to me, when these, when the public can come.
So they're going to be there, we can share some of those times. We've been finalizing those times, and there's some flexibility there that they may change. You know, of course, depending on weather or, or other things that can impact it. It's primarily practices. They have two practice matches scheduled, intersquad matches, where they will play. And other than that, it's generally practice. But we're working out a release now, out of comms, that should go out tomorrow, and we'll make sure that the information is shared with you as well.
And if anyone is interested, I can give details there, when they're coming to receive them at the airport.
It's all been just finalized here very, very recently.
Okay, excellent. I just wanted to pop in, my son Ryan committed to NC State as well. So there's going to be lots of councilmember children at NC State this year. Anything else for the good of the order, sir? You have staff announcements?
Well, I would just say, you may notice that Giselle's not with us this evening. Since we're celebrating children, I'll celebrate hers. I gave her permission to go be at her son's award ceremony at school tonight, and he came home with six trophies and two medals. So let me, let me brag on her son as well.
I thought everyone just got one. He must be exemplary.
He cleaned up, apparently.
Okay. Excellent. So we are going to go into some closed sessions at this time. We do not have any plans for any public business after that. So I want to thank you all for attending this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Our next meeting will be a work session here on Thursday, May 16th, at 6:00 PM. Remember, at 11:00 AM in these chambers, there will be a budget input session for those open house who wish to attend. Please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov or visit www.morrisvillnc.gov/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and a second to go into closed session? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ralph.
So pursuant to North Carolina statute 418.318.11, A4 and A5, a move that we go into closed session for a economic development matter and property acquisition.
Any second?
A second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ralph, a second from Councilmember Johnson to go into closed session. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Preparing none, that carries unanimously, 959, we are now in closed session.